Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Order of business, July 13th, 2021, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Yes. Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Here.
Mo Badun.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski-Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call. Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. First item we have on the agenda is the actual agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the order of business of the July 13th, 2021, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, as amended, be approved.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is approval of minutes. This is the minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of June 22nd, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the regular meeting of June 22nd, 2021, as outlined in item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is minutes from the electronically held special meeting of June 28th, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of June 28th, 2021, as outlined in 4B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdalhak. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. This is items that are currently on this agenda. There is a limit of two minutes. You must come up to the podium and identify yourself by your name and your street and city.
Madam Chair, do you want me to go up to the podium? I do have comments on an agenda item.
Go ahead.
Okay, here or there?
Go on up there.
Okay. I just need council's, oh, let me send you a sec, quick. I do need council's input on this, okay? There's a couple items that are on the agenda, several bids that are being awarded, and it asks for the clerk and the mayor's signature, okay? But the contracts are not attached. So I would like your direction, because in the past, it's been done both ways. Sometimes you're presented with the contract and sometimes you're not. And I know there's been issues in the past about seeing the contract. So I need your direction, I guess probably part of the motion, on whether you want that contract brought back before we sign it, you sign, me and the other side.
I think it's good for transparency purposes that we have the actual contract that we're approving.
So it's up to you guys. I just wanted you to be aware as a body.
Which ones are they?
Which items are they?
Which one?
Which items?
Seven B, C, and D.
Seven B, C, and D.
So that's totally up to you guys, but I need your direction on what you.
I agree. We do need transparency and we do need to see the contracts. Councilman Abdullah.
I think in addition to the clerk's point, we'll also then be online, even for the residents to be able to view too.
Absolutely.
In case they had objections to anything.
Yeah, we need to have the residents be able to see it.
It's been done both ways, so I wanted to go forward what you guys, what you as a body would like.
Okay, so those items, which we would suggest we, at this time, we would refer them back to the administration when we come to them?
We can refer them back.
Unless, Madam Chair, unless there was, I mean, maybe the directors can tell us that there was some urgency on any one particular one or time.
Right. But we still need to see the contract for transparency.
Well, there may be some sort of, like Council Chair says, amid any circumstances that they have to have something. We've had before, we've had emergency sewer repairs before, the mayor came before, even a council meeting, saying, "I'm putting this on now, it's an emergency." And we've done it with, when we've done it, and it should be continued to be doing in an emergency basis.
We can do a special meeting for that if we need to, but I think we still need to see the backup contract.
Well, I will vote against that part, so when it comes time to vote, that's how I'll vote.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, public hearings and comments on agenda items. Any more?
Oh, is there anyone else? I didn't see anyone else in line. Okay, at this time, we will move on. Fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badun.
Thank you. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims, 6-1 through 639, as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have consideration of bids. We have City Engineer Dib bid award for Studio B renovation project, and I would like to add, it's also should be known as City Council Chambers.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the Studio B, otherwise known as the Council Chambers renovation project to Barnett Construction Services of Michigan LLC in an amount of $364,365.24, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. In addition, authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders, as outlined in item 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdalhak. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I think, my personal opinion being that residents see this and what have you, and this is where they come for all the meetings, I think somebody from administration should give at least just a brief outline of what's going to be done here, so that residents, departments, etc., could know.
Mayor, would you like to answer that?
Well, I can talk a little bit about it, but I know Mr. Dib also did the walkthrough. Basically, I mean, we're going to try to make this first as ADA compliant, also trying to follow the CDC, trying to, the table that you see in front of you. We got to design that and to have two ceilings on this side and the other side, so with the six feet separation. And you have partitions between each council members over here, ADA compliant. And also, we're gonna, that's also in combination with the technical part of it, with the cameras will be, some will be mounted on top. And a lot of residents wanted to also have this, if they can't be here present, they can actually call in on Zoom, so it's going to have the technology that you can live stream the meetings, and residents can actually call in, so you'll have residents, like, say, Zoom, and you can see their face, and they can interact with the people here in the audience, the council, us.
Great idea.
Was anything over and above?
Yeah. So, can you hear, okay. So in addition to, the mayor indicated that this is a design-built project, so the idea is to bring the chamber back to compliance. As you can see, this doesn't meet any code, ADA compliance or otherwise. We also have technology challenges with the way we have it set up now. So the project will consist of the design and the construction of the update to this chamber.
Council Chair.
Mr. Dib, so the question I have though is, if we're going to be spending money on things that are, you know, because of the COVID situation and what have you, and obviously, needless to say, this was a major issue for worldwide.
Sure.
But for right now, to go spend that particular part of the project on that with the pandemic, hopefully, obviously, I'm not Dr. Fauci or anything like that, but it appears to me from everything we read and see that it's going away, is that not spending money, you know, for almost no reason? So in other words, like, if you had hypothetically six feet between me and the council chair, and we spent $300 in order to accomplish this, is that not a waste of money?
So a lot of that money that we're spending on this project.
ADA, I agree.
ADA is part of it, but a lot of that money we're spending on this project, including the technology part, is movable. So it's intended to be relocated if we decided to move, so we can just pick it up and, it's not permanent. We're taking that into account, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Badun.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. My question is, do we have any estimated timestamp on when we would believe it would be starting and it would be finishing?
So, so this is a design-built, and with the challenges that we currently have in the industry on construction and material, it's a big challenge. We gave them, and the proposal, is a 30-day on the design and 90 days on the construction. That is not to exceed. So that's the current schedule that we have in place. And then all the bidders walked through the facility and they all agreed to it. So that's what we have. The challenge will be trying to get material in today's environment.
Okay, and my next question is, and maybe our city clerk can answer this for us. If we do this, is this going to affect the elections that are going to be happening for the primary election? Are we doing this after the primary election?
Well, we're going to do the design first, and then we'll do the construction. So the design work will take place, and then hopefully, that will take us into, after the election, but it should not have an effect, no.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, for those, the director, he said that design-built a couple times. For those who don't know what it is, it's, you design it as you go, you know, it's not, you don't have a set plan in front of you, you start doing some work, and then you change it as you go. And, and you said there, it's not to exceed?
Yes, so the design-built, yes, sir. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
364?
Yes, sir.
It's not to exceed, that's, okay.
So part of it, approximately 85,000 of that is the technology side, and then we have the design cost all built into it. The idea behind it is that the, in the design-built process, the advantage is that any, any decision you make during the design process, you're holding, the contractor is aware of what the final project, you have a, you have a handle on the total cost of the project going into it. So the 364 will include the technology and the design and the construction efforts. So anytime you make a decision during the design, if you wanted to change the seat to, you know, gold-plated, that will have an impact on the final cost, the contractor will let you know that.
Well, that's not going to stop them from asking for more money if they have to do something else.
Yes, it doesn't stop them, but at least they're aware of all the elements that we're all, so this is what we needed to do. We showed them, we had a mandatory walkthrough, and then we have a price that includes breakdown of the cost of the design and installation and the construction. So labor, material, and design is all included, and it's in your package.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Abdalhak.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dib.
Yes, sir.
The equipment we're going to have here, can we move it outside of this room in case there are any events which benefit residents and benefit general public in our city? Will we be able to take it outside and film and do things which promote our businesses, our events, our government?
Good evening, Council. The, the equipment we're going to have, as Mr. Dib mentioned, is going to be not permanent. However, it will be affixed here in the studio. If we want to take something outside the studio, we'll still have our portable equipment that we can use, we can take that anywhere. And we will continue to do a lot of, if you will, outside programming with, with our portable equipment, okay? Fundamentally though, again, for the, for the purpose of this studio, this, this, this equipment will be affixed here in the studio, we won't be able to move that out on a portable basis, okay?
We do have enough money in the PEG, which is the Public Education and Government. Can we buy separate equipment which is capable to be going outside to see and film events and see other things in our city, so we can promote it live if we have some, let's say the fire department has some event, can we go outside and film and do what they do and what they, you know, perform and?
Sure.
Can we, we have enough money.
Yep.
And if we don't spend it, it's going to sit doing nothing, basically.
Yeah, yeah, there are funds there, there's no question about that. Again, again, fundamentally, we do have portable equipment that we're using right now, okay? The ability to do live streaming, probably not, because again, just for example, in order to do live streaming here directly into the cable system, would require us to run a fiber optic, a fiber optic line from here over to the Berwin Center into that studio, okay? That's why when we're talking about live streaming, it'll be on probably YouTube Live, or we'll be able to put it on the city's website, okay?
I personally would like to see that. I think the resident deserve to see all these technologies in our city, and I believe we do have enough money, and it should be spent instead of just sitting in restricted funds.
Duly noted, and we can, we can look at that, no, there's no question.
Look at it and let us know, that would be beneficial to all of us.
Yeah, yeah, we've already done a little bit of preliminary looking at that. Again, what, what the contractor came back with was the fact that we would have to run that line, fairly expensive, but again, there are funds there, certainly.
It's worth it.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll take a good, hard look, no question about that. But again, keep in mind though, again, we still have the portable equipment, that will be above and beyond anything that's going on here in the studio, so we're going to continue to do outside type events all over the place, all right?
Thank you.
And on a personal note, folks, it's good to be back. Thank you for all the welcomes, delighted to be back, thank you.
I have a question. Are we going to be expanding the size of this actual room here or keep it within the parameters?
Keep it within the parameters.
Okay, also too, are we going to have permanently, cameras that are permanently mounted in here?
They will be mounted, but they're relocatable. They are mounted on the wall, but we can be, we are able to relocate them if we have to.
They're removable? There's not going to be any, okay.
No, there will be hard wires in the back that we will lose if we relocate.
Right, right, right.
But the actual equipment is designed to be relocated, yes.
Okay, because the reason I'm asking this is I had a resident get ahold of me, and they were concerned, because this is a pole location, and you really, you're not allowed to have any surveillance or permanently mounted cameras that you can't remove during the voting process.
People vote inside his chamber?
Yeah, well, they could be disconnected, okay?
Okay, that's what we.
They will be fixed, okay?
I just wanted them to hear that on record.
Right, yeah, yeah, and we can certainly disable them, there's no problem there at all. And of interest too, these row, these, these cameras are going to be robotic cameras, okay? We're going to take one of these closets, and we'll be setting up a control room in, in the closet with, with the joystick and all the monitors. So again, all you're going to have will be four wall-mounted cameras in various spots throughout the room here, and the only thing you'll see is seeing them go buzzing back and forth.
So as long as they can be removed from the actual room during the voting process, so they're not visible at all?
Well, yeah, yeah, we'll have to take a look at that as far as the actual disassembly. We can, we can unplug them, we can cover them, a number of things. I'm not sure, to be honest, if we'll be able to physically remove them out of the room.
Okay, because we might want to check with our election laws to make sure, or with the clerk. I think you need to coordinate that with the clerk, so we're not in any violation.
We'll have, we'll do, we'll do.
Perfect, thank you. I figured you would, that's good. Okay, is there any further discussion in regards to this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Acting DPW Director Bid Award for 2021 CDBG Water Main Improvements for Joy Road and Virgil Avenue.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the 2020, 2021 CDBG Water Main Improvement on Joy Road and Virgil Avenue to Lawrence M. Clark Incorporated in the amount of $1,010,001.50, and approve an engineering budget in the amount of $72,299 for weight trim. This project is funded jointly with the 2020, 2021 CDBG and water sewer funds. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract on behalf of the city, and authorize the Controller's Office to return all billed bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders, as outlined in 7B.
Okay, I think this is the one we were going to refer back, because it does not have a contract attached, Councilman.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badun.
Can we, here, I know this is coming from the city engineer, can we hear from him and see if this is something that is mandatory, or if we should hold for a special meeting, or if they can hold off to the following meeting?
Director Dib, can we hold this off to the next meeting?
The, the issue here is that we're using 500 and, $500,000 of CDBG funds on this project, in addition to $510,000 of the water budget, the water department funds. I, I have to see if we, I don't want to risk losing the grant money.
Okay, what we'll do is, we will refer it back. If there is a deadline, get ahold of me, and we'll call a special meeting for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, all those in favor of referring this back, say aye.
We first have a motion that I, nobody, but there was a second, so.
Nobody supported it.
I supported it.
Then you put this on the thing.
So now we can vote on it, A or N, then we can remotion.
All right, all right, go ahead. Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion?
What are we voting on?
If this fails, then it is referred back to Director Dib, and it could come back in a special meeting with the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Council Chair.
I'll amend my motion to refer this back to the administration. Support.
Okay, support by Councilman Badun. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. And this also is another one that we were going to refer back. This is for the Acting DPW Director Dib Bid Award for the Lower Virge CSO L42 Sewer Separation Program, and we will extend the same courtesy to you if you need a special meeting.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that City Council refer HC back to the administration. Support.
Support by Councilman Badun, I guess, I was, any discussion?
7C.
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 I'm sorry, at 7C, back to administration.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. And this is the last one we were going to be referring back for a contract. This is for Grants and Budget Compliance Director Jamal Bid Award for the Demolition Contract for FEMA MSP Home Acquisition and Demolition Program.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that we refer this back to the administration. Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Councilman Badun, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
You support it, so you go first. Councilman Badun.
My question to you is also to Director Badri, is this something that we need to, is the time limited, or can we refer this back?
We will also extend the same courtesy.
Yes.
If they need a special meeting. I'm doing that on all three.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, awesome, I didn't know, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdalhak.
And that's when I'm a little bit more concerned, just because this is a demolition of houses, have had flooding and issues for years and years and years. I'm just throwing it out there, maybe we could talk with our counselor, Gary Miyaki. I don't know, maybe we approve it, subject to seeing the contract by tomorrow, but I, on this one, I'd rather not hold up.
Councilman, and Council, Corporate Council Miyaki, is that okay?
Well, the, the Senate Body has, in the past, basically approved these, subject to my review, you could do something along those lines. You could approve it, subject to someone not having an objection, but that strikes me as kind of ambiguous, potentially, in this, in this context. Just because, what's someone going to do, send something, and then all of a sudden it's going to appear back onto the agenda?
Well, what if we were to do it like this, Gary? What if we were to do it, that we approve it, subject to your review and approval by Friday, but meanwhile, before then, the administration sends us the contracts, puts them online so that the residents can see them if they want to see them, we could see them if we want to see them. If we have an objection, let's just say, I have an objection about clause C, or whatever.
You could raise a.
Then I have enough time to contact you, and then you could reject it or take it back to administration, if it was a legitimate concern.
Right.
But let's not hold up the residents in this particular case, just based on this technicality.
Then perhaps prove it's subject to my review and approval with an effective date no earlier than this Friday.
But in addition, that was got to be added, the administration's got to get those contracts to us by tomorrow and put them online by tomorrow. I presume the contracts are in place, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so it shouldn't, there should be no delay in that case.
Yeah, and I wouldn't have a problem being.
And then if there's, and then if any one of us has a problem with any of the clauses, we have enough time to get ahold of you for you to say, "I object it."
Okay, that sounds great.
Councilman Muscat.
I move City Council approve this after Corporation Council Gary Miyaki reviews and accepts the terms without, by this Friday.
Subject to our. Posting the contracts online.
Posting the contracts online and sent to City Council members without objections.
No, by no later than tomorrow.
By no later tomorrow, without objections.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Grants and Budget Compliance Director Jamal Bid Award State and Federal Grants Legal Services.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for State and Federal Grant Legal Services to Allen Brothers Attorney and Counselors, PLLC, in an amount of $140 per hour as an assistant to City Corporation Council, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign a five-year contract on behalf of the city, as outlined in 7E.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdalhak. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Corporate Council, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't have an opportunity to necessarily chime in on this. I, I think language would actually be better to award, to accept the proposal of Allen Brothers Attorneys and Counselors, PLLC, and to approve and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement with Allen Brothers, as outlined in item 7E.
It does say that.
So moved. Madam Chair, do you want to move the five years, or you just leave it as is?
The, the problem is, is that the five years, as he stated, is actually unenforceable. The five years is a maximum five years, and the way it's stated in the motion suggests that it is a firm five-year agreement, which violates the city charter.
So remove the five years?
Right, so the, the agreement actually ends up reflecting that it's up to five years, but it's subject to changes.
So if I just keep it the way it is, without the five years, we're okay?
Yes.
Um, I guess you could, but it's not really technically a bid.
But on the open end, just make it up to five years.
Okay, I move that Dearborn Heights City Council accept the proposal for State and Federal Grant Legal Services to Allen Brothers and Attorney, Counselors, PLLC, in the amount of $140 per hour as the assistant to City Corporation Council, as they were the lowest qualified bidder. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city, as outlined in 7E.
Support.
Support by Councilman.
Approve the agreement, you have to.
And approve the agreement on behalf, as outlined in 7E.
Support. Gary, didn't they have to say not to exceed five years, though?
It's actually in the agreement.
Okay. Who's supporting it?
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Constant, bid award for renovation of two Eaton Center restrooms, and these desperately need it, trust me.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for the renovation of the two Eaton Center restrooms, to see and ask construction in amount of $16,400, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. This project will be funded with community development block grant funds. In addition, authorize the Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the unsuccessful bidders, as outlined in item 7.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Just, just quick comment, keep up the good work, Director. I mean, she's, our new director has done a very, very good job. She's looking into things, adding things, and I almost hate to get into my mailbox, because she'll have a stack this big of different programs and projects coming up for the seniors, so just want to say, good job.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Thank you so much, and also, like Councilman Abdallah saying, great job. But just a question to you, is, are these going to be accessible for people in wheelchairs as well? I know that was a concern, that I had the conversation with one of the residents, and I believe the actual toilets are supposed to be at a certain height. Yep, and so I just wanted to know, if we're meeting all those...
The bathrooms that we're talking about are not going to be handicap accessible. What we're talking about, and Ray knows this really well, it's going to be accessible heights. There's no way to make the doorway any larger for wheelchairs, but we do have a handicap accessible bathroom at both centers, that, you know, wheelchairs can access.
Are those up to code?
They are up to code, and they were actually not done too long ago, and that was through CDBG funds as well. They're pretty nice, big bathrooms, and can accommodate a wheelchair with no problem.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have City Engineer Dib, request for bids, annual HVAC preventative maintenance service agreement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for replacement HVAC maintenance agreement, to provide scheduled preventative maintenance work, as well as an hourly rate for tasks beyond the scope, as outlined in 7G.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I'm not sure I'm going to answer this too. I know our Councilman Ray Muscat has had some experience in this field.
Huh?
Thank you, Ollie. He's the expert. He's had some experience in this, and I'm sure he's going to comment, but also, I believe, Mike Blackburn, you're pretty familiar with this stuff, if I'm not mistaken, because I've heard both sides of the coin on this. You know, some people think this is the greatest thing since sliced bread, some people think it's a complete waste of money. And I just want to get somebody that's in this field, to give us their opinion of it, if you don't mind. I hate to put you on the spot, but if you don't mind.
As far as a maintenance agreement?
Yes.
Maintenance agreements...
As having one, versus just paying it on a case-by-case basis?
Case-by-case basis, you're not given preferential treatment, you're not given priority treatment, however it's worded. Apparently, that was a problem last time. Plus, you can schedule maintenance, like before the winter time, with the previous agreements, they come out, they go through all the boilers and all the buildings, make sure all the tubes are cleaned, everything's ready to go. And in the springtime, they go through, they make sure all the AC condensers are all up to par, and that they're ready to go, so that when the weather gets warm, it has heat, or air, I'm sorry. But it's just, it's good to have monthly checkups of the systems. If you don't have breakdowns, they go through, they go through the systems, make sure everything's okay. We can't spot everything all the time, but when you have your monthly inspections on different units, is when you can catch things also, if something's not...
Overall, you consider it savings to the city?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Wenzel.
Do we have one in place now?
The contract expired June 30th.
Who, was it, did they, how can I put this? Did they do more work than what we paid out? I mean, was it a deal, we got a deal on it, or do we pay them by the job, when they do that?
The last contract we had, we have cut, we cut down the number of hours because of the new units. We needed less time on them, because they were newer. This past year was an anomaly, because of COVID and things being shut down, units were off, things weren't running. So to say, we have a few extra hours left that John's control owes us, because stuff was shut down, we just weren't using the hours, so we are still using up the hours from the previous contract, right now.
Thank you.
Councilman Abdallah.
I have a question. Do we have a plan for the maintenance and the replacement of our units?
We have been going, we have been going through, I have been replacing two to three units per year, to get them on a rotation, we have so many. The city hall here has, in the front half, has seven units. I've been doing one or two of those a year. In the past two years, we replaced all three units on the fire headquarters, because two of them had wore out, and their parts were not available for them. We got a couple at Young Center, we're looking at replacing, because those are starting to get old.
Do we budget for those ahead of time?
They were in the approved budget, those items were...
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
This is what I've been saying for a long time, and I believe our engineer, Ollie Deeb, will concur with me. We need to get away from the preventative maintenance mode, and get into the predictive maintenance mode. We can't wait till a unit breaks down, and say, "We got an emergency that we have to replace." Preventative maintenance is a good thing, but it's also outdated.
Director Dib, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, so part of the new process that we're doing now, and not just in HVAC, but in everything, including pavement and roof material and everything, planned replacement. Everything has an expected life, so we have a planned replacement schedule on any piece of equipment that we put into service, whether it's HVAC unit. Preventative maintenance is one thing, you know, you change your oil on the car, but there is a life expectancy. So we're doing preventative, and predictable, and planned replacement. So going forward, we'll have that, and that will be for everything, not just the building material. So roofing will be the same thing, equipment and the facility, they will have to be planned. So planned replacement will be included. Pavement, the same way, water mains, you know, infrastructure, any kind, that's what we're trying to get into now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we also have City Engineer Dib, request for bids, on-call, concrete sidewalk replacement contract.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for a replacement contract for an existing on-call contract, solicited back in 2010 by the City of Dearborn Heights, that was never re-advertised, as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Just want to say that I'm glad that the mayor decided to put this out for bid again. I think it's a very important program, it's much cheaper, I tell you, as a realtor, it's much cheaper for the residents to replace at this type of a cost, which typically, I hope I don't screw up the bids, but typically, it's been around $200 to a resident, versus a resident having to replace that particular slab of four-by-four, and you call a concrete company, and you're going to get an estimate of anywhere between $450 to $500, $600, $700 bucks, so it's much cheaper for the residents to do this. And I do agree that we should put it out for bid, so I just want to say, good job, it's a good program. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
How the residents can contact these people and...
Is there a number, Mayor, that they can call?
Isn't it going out for bids?
They actually, so, we have a big stack, as of right now, that residents come in here, we announce it, it's on our face, city website. So we will announce it, once we get the company, we vote on which company you guys agree to, then we'll advertise it to the whole city. And, you know, going through the city, especially during the flood, we saw a lot of pavements, a lot of, a lot of work that needs to be done on the sidewalk, and a lot of residents actually reached out, even while doing a flood walk, they wanted to replace their pavement. So we will advertise it on WDHC cable, on our website, our Facebook, and residents still, they come in every day, almost, to fill out the form, to volunteer to do their sidewalk. So we'll make sure that gets out to all the residents.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have City Engineer Dib, request for bids, on-call sanitary sewer tap repairs contract.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Controller's Office to advertise for bids for a professional service contract with a vendor who specializes in work with sanitary sewer tap repairs, as outlined in item 7.
Support.
Aye.
Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
I just want you guys to know, I had no idea what this was. So Councilman Abdallah's next-door neighbor sent me, who's one of my best friends, sent me a video of a huge hole. And I said, "Oh, it's nothing, you got nothing to worry about, it's probably just from the storm pipe," it was probably lightning, because lightning generates from bottom up. And he said, "No, I don't really think that it is." And I said, "It's probably just lightning, or, you know, a hole, probably a rabbit was hiding during the flood." Honest to God, I had no idea. And Director Dib came out there, they did some videos, and they sent me photos, and it was actually an entire pipe that was broken, so kudos to him, and I had no idea. So if you know any of the residents, or friends, or family, after the actual huge storm, if you see a big, deep hole in your backyard, I promise you, it's not a rabbit, reach out to your local municipality, where that's Dearborn Heights. Bugs, bugs is there. I thought it was groundhog, I said, "What's going on?"
Councilman Abdallah.
Madam Chair, I want to thank you, Mr. Dib, as soon as I called you, you sent people immediately, the same day. And I thank you again for putting it here, because we might have more than one single hole in the city.
Quite a few, actually.
Thank you.
And so I also want you to know that this also happened in Dearborn, Garden City, and a couple of other local cities, so keep an eye on your backyard, if you haven't checked, take a look in your backyard.
Perfect. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Grants and Budget Compliance Director Jamal, bid award for demolition, oversight, and contract administration.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for demolition, oversight, and contract administration for the four FEMA homes located at 24127, 24077, 24111, and 24339 Courier Street, to Environmental Testing and Consulting, ETC, in the amount of $4,600, as they were the lowest qualified bidder. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract on behalf of the city, as outlined in 7J.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Councilman Abdallah. What the coin?
Now you're closer. So I had a question on this, I don't recall seeing this on other projects on Courier, off the top of my head, when we tore down houses. And the second question I had, I've been pretty impressed with your credentials, Mr. Dib, is this something you'd be able to do, instead of having to hire a company for $4,800? Because this particular case is not tearing down a house, obviously, it's just making sure all the protocols are followed. And it seems to me like that's something that somebody within our city should be able to handle this, without having to pay the $4,800.
So part of what this company will do, ETC, for us, is the hazmat compliance notifications. So there are, you have to go through, like asbestos, for instance, or mold. There will be a certified asbestos removal contractor that goes through and files the paperwork for intent to remove. And then you've got different criterias, in terms of removal. For reoccupation, you have to remove to a certain clearance, and for demolition, you remove to certain clearances. So, yes, I'm aware of how to do it, but this is, it requires certain licenses. So hazmat removal.
Do we do this in the past, with other homes?
I don't know what we did in the past, but I'm doing it by the book.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Perfect.
We used to have arguments about...
Councilman Abdallah.
I did receive email from one of the journalists who works, her name is, I think Sarah, or Sue, Sue, that she said, "The word oversight should be GH, instead IT."
Yes.
So if we can correct that.
Yes, sir, I'm aware of that.
Okay, any further discussion before we vote? Councilman Wenzel.
Who's going to check to make sure these things are done?
So we have contract managers now, as part of the new process that we keep talking about, we have on the receiving end, the city has a process in place now, with the new administration, we have, we have a team. We have a compliance director, we have a city engineer, and we have a chief of staff who makes sure we all, we're all in line. We have a process, we are not going to rely on a consultant filing forms or sending notifications. We have people on the receiving end, that make sure that stuff is done, and done properly. So that's my job now.
Good, because in the past, we've had some issues with dust flying through the air, and...
Yes, sir.
And all kinds of problems.
We do, we do have a process in place, and that is not just on this contract, but for the rest of the projects that we perform, we will be looking at them.
Good deal, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have contract amendment with GFL Environmental USA Incorporated.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file the amendment to the contract with GFL Environmental USA Inc. This document was signed on June 20th, 2021, as part of an emergency due to the recent rainfall and flooding in the city, as outlined in 8A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Please, go ahead.
Corporate counsel, go ahead, please.
It should actually be ratified or approved, not just receive note and file, because the mayor did it on an emergency basis, but it should be approved by the council.
I amend my motions, that be, the contract be ratified and approved, that was signed on an emergency basis.
Support.
Supported again by Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is Freedom Contracting Proposal for a Silicone Roof System at City Hall.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that City Council approve the proposal from Freedom Contracting for the installation of a new silicone roof system at City Hall, as outlined in 8B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdallah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Well, this time, I'm going to let you go first. Go ahead.
I would like our mayor to tell us a little bit about this, because I believe they've done a great job on this one, and I'd like the residents to hear how much saving we've done on this contract.
We have the, I didn't bring that contract with me, do you have that contract, Mr. Dib? Yes, so we have reviewed it, we did, oh.
There was lots of talk about it on Facebook, and I'd like the residents to really know what happened.
Okay, for the old one, or the new one? You're talking about the old?
Yes.
Well, the old one, we actually...
Mr. Miatki, I have a question. Do we have to disapprove the contract which was before this one, or approve this one?
Was it an award of a bid?
It was approved by City Council, I believe.
It was, it was never signed. It was never signed. Rescind that?
I believe it was.
Yeah, I would recommend rescinding that, and then approving this, you could do it as two motions, you could do it as one motion.
Okay.
One, you know, two separate individual motions.
So the previous, I can tell you, the previous, it wasn't, okay, the council approved it, however, when I took over, you know, as most people actually seen, it was chaotic in the city hall. You know, walk into the department, the building department, there was drawings up to pretty much erased, there was checks uncashed. There was, again, you know, it was after, it was during a pandemic, so there was a lot of money that was going out. I just wanted to make sure we have a good budget, you know, so with that, I was looking at every contract very carefully. So this was one of them that I actually reviewed with Mr. Dib, he can probably shed a little bit more light than I can, because he really dissected it. But I can tell you, okay, so the previous contract for this here, it wasn't really a contract, it was in front of council, to approve it for $288,500. And when it came in front of me, obviously, now it's asking me that I have to go in front of, I mean, send it to in front of the council, and being transparent, I wanted to make sure that it's, again, I dissected it with Mr. Dib, the engineer, and so when it came in front of us, it says that we have to put it back in front of council, again, as the clerk mentioned, you don't have to say, authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign it. So I'm not going to present to council anything unless I approve it. So we went through, and there was, the contract, the way it was written, it's just, it was very vague, you know, like I said, there's one, it says the boiler, it was boilerplate contract, which says that you got to fill in the blanks. I've never actually seen like a contract that says that, it was very vague, ambiguous. It doesn't specify like the roofing system that they're going to put on. It has nothing, there was no method of installation, if it was mechanical, what adhesive, and also, a lot of it was like check boxes. There was, there was, like I said, there was one box that says indicated, it was a stipulated sum, and there was actually, there's one that says one times four cost per linear foot, and there's another one that says two times the four, two times four cost per linear foot and so on. So the material quantities were never specified in that contract. So you can say one, one linear foot, you know, or a thousand, a hundred thousand linear foot, so it was very vague. So the $288,000, you know, basically, it doesn't say not to exceed $288,000. So they can come back and say, hey, you know, we didn't put one linear foot, we had a hundred thousand linear foot, so the contract could be, I mean, I can't even quote a number. And also, the contract never referred, it refers as a roof consultant. It doesn't say, they were the, the owners and representative for the project. It doesn't specify the city as, as actually the owner. So there was a lot of things in here, again, you know, the, the things that really struck me here, it's, it says that there was a condominium, it was, it says that this contract was Meadows Condominium. I, I thought that this thing was for a City Hall, but it does reference the City Hall in there along with Meadows Condominium. So it, so there was no specifications for the City Hall, what type of roof to put on. However, for the condominiums, it does specify some stuff on there, which I know this contract, I'm not gonna put it in front of council, and that's why I didn't put it in front of council. And if the council wanted to approve it, you know, the, again, you know, the, the council chair, she could have came here and started reaching out to the company. The administration was never contacted, instead, she wanted the, the company to discuss this, you know, should, I mean, it was in my office. So with that, that's one of the reasons why I didn't want to put it in front of council. And, you know, when we dug through this, and we went, and we started looking for other companies, see what they can do to repair the roof, and we actually found an excellent company, they're gonna do the silicone, which is, you know, that most, most companies or most businesses, that's what they use the technology. And I think Mr. Deep, you know, like I said, he dissected a second contract in addition to this here.
Before, so in addition to.
Mr. Deep, did we go out for a bid?
Yes, sir. So, so one thing you have to keep in mind, that because of the current state of the economy, roofing materials are not readily available. We reached out to roofing contractors, and almost everyone we talked to had indicated that because of the shortage, especially on the rubber roofing system, they can only give you a bid on the, on the labor. And when you sign a contract and you're ready to place an order, when you have a check in your hand, is when they call the manufacturers and tell you, your roofing system's going to cost X. So I, it's hard for me to get a bid, and, and so far in advance, not knowing when I'm gonna award the contract, and for him to give me a price on the system. Now, in addition to the deficiencies that mayor had indicated in the previous contract, the fact that there was no system specified for the, for the building, you know, for those of us who work with roofing material, there are many different systems, single ply, EPDM, you know, four ply, many, many other systems. And, and so for the, for the building, for this building, the contract didn't specify any system, it just roof replacement at, at City Hall. Now, for the condominium, it was very clear, it was an EPDM, sheet metal, and insulation. So I don't know what this is all about, I was just looking at doing a, a technical review. Now, for the new system, it is designed for this building, based on what we have and removal of the wet area, infrared testing of the moisture area, and then repl, and replacement of a new system on top.
My question again, Mr. Deep. This medo, whatever.
Condominiums?
Was it intentional or by mistake type of error or?
So, I don't know.
How those documents got into contract with the city, and how this got.
So I, I did, that was before my time, obviously, but I did, I did a little review on, on the, how it was submitted. It was submitted by a previous director back on November 30th, 2020. And then there was, city voted, City Council voted to approve the contract with advanced roofing for $288,500 on December, and then on December 8, 2020, there was a resolution. Subsequently, the director submitted another request dated March 9, 2021, to correct the initial request and asked council for a mayor to, and the clerk to sign the contract. So other than that, I don't, it was never awarded, but we have.
What is the price we got now? Is this system which we're going to put on the roof better than the one which was proposed?
That's, that's an excellent question. What was the one proposed? That's the, that's the struggle I'm having. There wasn't one, there wasn't anything, I mean.
Much is the saving between the two?
Ninety-two, ninety-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars savings.
Thank you.
Councilman Abdallah.
So I have a couple of questions, Mr. Deep.
Yes, sir.
First things first, first of all, let me start with my opinion. My opinion as an individual, as a resident, one of the first things that frustrated me here when I got on the council eight, nine years ago, or seven, whatever it was, is how i, i, in the business world, you know, you have, you know, I don't know, I need panels done, I say, oh, I got my guy, or my gal, or my company, and you just call them, you know they got good prices, you know they're honest, you know they're good, do it, get it done, let's go. And, and, and that's how I operate in the business world. There's no such thing as bidding process or what have you. And it frustrated me in the bidding process, because a lot of times, we'd go out for a bid, and I'd get frustrated as a Dearborn Heights resident, why, like, why do we put it out for bid? Why don't we just ask a, like, one of them that came, if you remember the thing at the park, oh my God.
Parkland Park.
Parkland, yeah. Remember the? I said, we, we had bids for that roof on it.
Bathroom?
Yeah, that little, little patio or whatever, picnic.
Pavilion.
Pavilion, thank you.
Pavilion, yeah.
On a pavilion, and the estimates were like eighty-five hundred, eleven thousand, nine thousand, eight hundred. I'm thinking, you could put a roof on a whole house for $4,000. What the heck's going on here? Why can't we call two, three roofers that I know or anybody knows, locals, you know they're honest, let's get them a bid? I found out you can't do that, and that frustrated me. So, but I'm just telling you, that's my opinion of how I like it done. So I'm not saying you shouldn't have done it that way, because I see why it's done that way. A lot of people do, I do it that way in my business. But at the same time, per the charter, we gotta put everything out for bid. So that, that concerns me now, because now we're going off the charter, and that could open up eyes, or people may say, okay, well, why did it go to this guy? Why not to that guy? Why didn't it go to two, three different people to bid on it? Maybe to have either better product, better pricing, or nothing else, at least for transparency purposes. Now, the challenge that I've got, and I get your challenge too, mine and yours, that this is a time sensitive issue, because we've had water come down in the treasurer's office, I know the treasurer's office had to shut down for a day, maybe two. I know in the clerk's office, they've had some water come down, needless to say, this is not acceptable. So I realize when you put it out for bids, that may delay the process, but the sad fact is, we have to go through that process.
And, and again.
So if this is okay legally, or maybe our council can tell us, then fine. But I just want to make sure we're following the right protocols per the charter. And, and then lastly, as far as the things that were wrong on the last contract, so I know the mayor was saying, you know, filling in the blanks, you know, it, it does happen on contracts. There are contracts, there are templates, and if that company, whoever it was, the first previous company was, always goes out for bids, they're probably gonna have a template contract that you just add in different things, so it's possible. The mistakes, condos, whatever, that's something you gotta ask them, and obviously rely on our counselor to, I, I, you know, obviously check the contract.
I don't, I don't mind mistakes, but when I, when I look at a material, a material list, and all it specify is the cost of the unit, so two by four is 250, two by, one by two is $20, but it doesn't tell you how many are included. That's, that's the trouble I have with the contract, because now it's open ended, and when you sign a contract like this, even on an individual basis, as a homeowner, when you give a contractor, you're giving them a blank check. I used 260 pieces of two by four. You have no, it becomes, that's, that's the issue I have.
I'm just trying to get, you know, should we have gone out for bid? Look, again, what I'm telling you is a system that was used here, I use it every day in my business.
I understand.
But the rules here are not that, so I just want to make sure we're okay as far as legal ease.
Corporate counsel, would we be in violation of the charter if we did not go out for bids?
Well, technically, it's a violation of the city ordinance that has to do with bidding, because the charter now puts it into an ordinance, and the ordinance would require this matter to go out to a bid. It's an improvement for over the specified amount in the ordinance.
Okay, yeah.
What about under, Gary, what about under?
An emergency or something like that?
This is hypothetically, I mean, kind of sort of emergency, certainly, if there's water coming down, it's kind of an emergency. What about under those circumstances? Can we just hire a company and move forward?
I think you have a difficulty with regard to that, but you could also end up going out quickly for a request for proposal with a timeframe that essentially would need to be done on almost an emergency basis.
And for full disclosure, I went through this co, this contract and the specifications, and I'm by far clearly, and I say it publicly, I'm not an expert on roofs or anything like that, but just from what I've seen, it made sense to my little mechanical mind, it made sense.
Well, I could do one.
But I just want to make sure we follow the right protocols, maybe we put it out for a five day bid, three day bid, whatever.
If we could put this over for just a moment so I can take a look at the ordinance book, the, you know, type of thing, and I could be right back here within three minutes and tell you definitively.
Would it be okay if we skipped over it and come back to it?
I would, I'd be perfectly fine with that.
Okay, we'll continue on when you come back, then we'll go back to that immediately. That way we can keep the meeting going, because we've got a lot of stuff on here tonight. Okay.
8C now, or?
Next item on.
8C.
Now, we do have a motion on the floor. How will we handle that?
Councilor? Who made, I, I made the motion, did I, did I not make? I make a mo, I advise my motion to come back to this at the later date in this, in this meeting.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun? Okay, let's move forward. Next, we have Plant Moran.
Vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's true. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Plant Moran Proposed Engagement Letter and Professional Services Agreement for Water and Sewer User Rates.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
What's attached this?
I moved that the Dearborn Heights City, I moved, I don't want to get in trouble with the clerk. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the proposed engagement letter and professional services agreement with Plant Moran for assistance in evaluating the calculated, calculated water and sewer user rates for the fiscal year 2021, 2000 dash 2022 as defined in a scope of services in attachment A. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in item 8C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
So if we could have, and I know we have a new DPW director, or maybe someone from Water, just explain it to the residents in just layman's terms, because this is one of the, sorry, this is one of the things that keeps coming up a lot of times with residents while our, our water rate's so high, sewer rate's so high, questions I always get also in addition to that, if I use no water and I'm on vacation for a month and a half, why am I charging sewer, et cetera, et cetera? Can we at least just get a briefing on that, but also how that would be assessed and addressed in this particular case with Plant Moran? Ah, Deep, you're popular today.
Thank you, Director Deep. Yeah, I, I, all right, sorry about that. But, so in this particular contract, that is not going to be addressed, that's not for what you're thinking about. Now, in terms of the cause of the rate, we are about to put a contract before this council to do just that. We're looking at the, what constitute, in the general ledger, what constitute, what pile, what bucket of money is, is doing, you know, so we're looking at dissecting it totally with a new director now and, and myself, we're, we're gonna be coming back with a contract to do just that. So this one doesn't do it.
Better prices for the residents.
Yes, sir, and it, and it is, it is, so it will start basically by looking at the cost of the commodities as well as the, the, the rates. As we all know, we discharge into two entities. We have Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, and we also have the Wayne County, so we have 95 and 5%. And so these, we, we pay different rates to the, to the authorities, and we're currently working with DUA. DUA is doing a new authority, that's the Downriver Utility Wastewater. And then, and they're going through the process of the new rate structure, and we're working with them to try to determine, in fact, I believe the next item on your agenda is, is making us the representatives. So we're working with them to identify the various options we have in terms of the sewer treatment. So when you, when you mention something like sewer charges, the, the, most of your actual bill is, has to do with sewers, not just the commodities. So we are working on, on with the authorities to see what options we have to determine a new rate structures. So we had a presentation two weeks ago, and so there are different ways of doing that, you know, as opposed to charging based on, currently what we do is we charge based on water consumption is what you pay, but we're trying to, because that's not fair, in the, in the summertime, you have, you know, lawn sprinklers, and you have things that do not end up normally in the sewers. So one of the options we have discussed with the authority is to charge based on average winter consumption, not summer. So that's one option. Second option was to actually put meters on, on the sewers and, and determine exactly how much each community is discharging into the system, because on the DUA side, we're one of 14 communities. So the, the, the pipes that carry our, our sewers are not dedicated just to the city of Dearborn Heights. They come to us from other communities and they carry flow. So each community, except one or two in the 14, actually have meters on their source. But in order for us to do that, that's a large capital project, and then you also have administration costs, because you have to deduct the amount coming into your city versus the discharge, and then they deduct you to figure out the, the right amount for your city. So there are many options, we'll be coming back, we, we're, we're looking at all these things now.
Just quick.
Thank you, Director Deep.
Just quick statement, you're doing a good job, keep it up.
Councilor?
Thank you. Okay, Councilman, I got Councilman Coniston next.
Yeah, and years ago, Director Deep, I tried to get the formula, this was before they regionalized the Detroit Water and Sewer, and it's an enterprise fund, so you have the, the cost that city of Detroit charged us, and there was a, a turn out of war in the city attorney, George Constance, no relation, and Detroit wouldn't give it. So, but that's what we hired Plant Moran for, to, to calculate that, those numbers, those rates, given that it's an enterprise fund, given the cost of the water, so on and so forth.
So in addition to that, there, the, the Wayne County is trying to get away from the, operating the, the Rouge Valley, so it's not just the Downriver, yeah, that's what I was told anyway, because they, they're the ones that sold, created the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, so now you have a private entity operating the plant and a professional company managing that plant, so Violia?
Yeah, Viola.
Violia, so they're, they're actually doing a great job. So if that continues to be the trend, and we have the second, so that we'll have a, you know, hopefully.
You probably know, because you were on, involved with Wayne County, but Wayne County wanted to sell it, and then we would have been a cap, so they're 5%, and Wayne County's 95%.
Yes, we discharge five Downriver and 95 to county. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Muscat?
It was about 10 years ago that I sat before council out in this audience and said, why do I gotta pay sewage when I water my grass, or wash my car when it doesn't go down, the, it only goes down the storm and not the sanitary drain? And I was told, you can't fix that. I asked about meters on how much we were disposing, said we couldn't do that. I kind of thought, well, they were wrong, but now you're, you're, you're telling me.
So, so other, so commercial facilities that make ice, or plants that do, you know, ice, they don't discharge that water into the sewers, right? So they make ice and salad. So that's, that's another example of people that can get exemptions and stuff. So we're, we're hopefully looking for.
I wanted another meter to water my lawn, so I don't get paid to sewage, but they told me no.
Okay, this time, any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now we will go back to 8B, which is Freedom Contracting Proposal Silicone Roof System at City Hall. I see Corporate Counsel Miaki is back.
Yes, Section 2803 Public Works, the city may contract for the performance of any public work, and may perform the same itself through its departments, officers, and employees. However, the city shall not make, shall not itself make any new public improvements exceeding an estimated $5,000 until it is used competitive bidding therefore. The city shall have the right to reject any and all bids or proposals. However, Section 2802 says for purposes of this Division One, competitive bidding requirements are fulfilled by competitive bidding using competitive sealed bids or proposals, competitive internet bids or proposals, competitive governmental bids or proposals, or other types of competitive bids or proposals that otherwise ensure competitive prices and/or terms. So I would say we still have to end up doing something competitive, however, if there is a way to do something at this point that will ensure, otherwise ensure competitive prices and/or terms, then it could end up going with this proposal, provided there's something that's done to ensure that. Perhaps surveying with, and comparing and seeing if other companies are able to match or beat this price might be considered to be something that would do that. Otherwise, I'm sorry, but my prior opinion stands, it would need to go out for bid.
I think we need to follow his opinion.
So, but, but Gary, I think you said the city, I'm sorry, it's hard to, because Because the microphone wasn't that close to, so I didn't hear it fully.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But can you read the clause about the city should have the right to deny the bid?
The city shall have the right to reject any and all such bids or proposals.
Okay, so if they have a right to reject, that does not mean that they cannot accept. They have a right to reject. It doesn't mean it's automatically rejected.
That's correct.
So, to me, based on that clause, the administration would probably, at least in that sentence, have the right to be able to just hire somebody. Am I correct or wrong?
I'm sorry, you're not.
You're not. No, that's all right. I heard that. You're saying they could reject anybody, but they then hire, say, who?
Yeah. In essence, it allows the city to end up rejecting any proposal. We don't have to accept the lowest bid. We could sit here and say, look, all these proposals are bad. I'm sorry.
Okay. Councilman, would you like to make the motion again?
Council Chair, I'd like to amend my motion and refer this back to the administration.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Badun. At this time, I don't think there's any further discussion because we're referring it back.
Madam Chair, I just would like to hear from Gary. What does he recommend we do?
Go out for bid.
Go out for bid. He said that.
Well, but Council Chair, but I don't want to just do a traditional go out for bid with the thing still leaking in two rooms and maybe more. So, I'd like to put a cap for the bids, maybe up to seven days go out for bids and then whoever the best bid, up to and including this company.
Yes, I think you can do an expedited bidding process.
But let's break a day. What's... I mean, I don't know if my... I don't know who knows how bad this roof is. How much time do you really have to deal with this?
The seahaw roof in the front half is really bad. This roof, when it was installed in 1996, was installed wrong.
So much for...
The back half, this part, this back half that was built later on, there's not many problems here. The front half, it was built wrong. The old roof was mechanically fastened that we have now. And that is the problem because the front half of seahaw has a gypsum deck and there are six inch screws that go down into the gypsum. Well, over time, when the insulation compresses, it pushes the screws up and the screws cause holes which get the water in there and then compresses the insulation some more and that's what gets the leaks.
So, have seven days?
Seven days, sounds good.
Technically, if we have a 40 mil roofing system on there now and the screws are popping through the 40 mil roofing system, if we go something with this system on the front half, the screws will keep on coming through. Then we're gonna go encapsulate all the moldy, all the wet insulation and who knows if that's gonna get moldy. That would be a better system on this back half, to seal this back half, but the front half is in bad shape.
Okay, but that's more an argument as far as this is a good system or not. What I'm saying is because of the emergency situation, is seven days too long?
Seven days would not be long enough. You would have to probably do 14 days because when you put it out on bid net, it may take...
I think we're talking two different things, I think.
It may take the contractors a couple of days to look at it and you have to set up a meeting so they all can... What I do when I go out for bids is I have a mandatory pre-bid meeting that all the contractors show up. That way, if anybody has a question, everybody hears a question at the same time, everybody hears the same answer at the same time, and you're not dealing with eight different people at eight different times and you forget to tell one contractor this, but another contractor that.
I think what Councilman Abdullah was asking is can the roof safely last for another seven days to go out for bids again?
That's what I'm concerned about. Yes, it has, as you know, been raining the last few days and we have not had any reported leaks. We were back up there doing some more repairs and so far, I've not got any reports saying leaks.
Then let's do it for within seven days.
Yeah, and if I may, Council...
Corporate Counsel Miyaki?
Thank you. What I was just going to say is that they do not have to go through their normal bid procedure. That normal bid procedure is not required by the ordinance. It's just the customary way in which city purchasing and so forth does, as Mr. Blackburn was referring to. So, yes, we can do it on an expedited timeframe even though that's not what they're used to doing.
Okay.
So, how many days would you recommend we do?
I'd recommend seven days seems to me to be reasonable.
I'll count that. Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the city council refer this back to the administration and come back to us within seven days for referring this and approving a company to repair the roof.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion?
Council Chair, I thought I heard Mr. Blackburn say you need, would need 14 days.
That's not according to our attorney. He said we could do it in seven.
But he's the one that gets the bids, so...
That is up to whoever puts the bid out. That's... That would be my preference. And just so you know, whenever the bids go out, whenever they're put on the bid net, they're only open on Wednesdays. So, whatever the deadline is, it might be a little bit longer than seven days, might be eight days. If you want seven days, it might be eight days or nine days because they're only open on Wednesdays.
How about like we market the 23rd of July, after Friday?
After 14 days.
So, it depends on when it gets put on and how long because they're only open on Wednesdays.
Well, we should be able to put it on tomorrow. If it's this important, let's not diddly-daddle and just put it on.
Well, can they put it... Can we put it on tomorrow?
So, we... The motion should be to approve going out to bid now, I assume, right?
Yes.
By referring it to back to the administration to go out for bid and have something back to us by the 23rd.
Okay. We have the specifications that we need to do. We can expedite the bidding process, assuming that we can work with the controllers. We have the specs, we have good specifications. We'll put them out to try to get other companies to bid the same, at least so we can compare apples and apples.
And what we'll do is we'll put it on the next agenda and even if they go past the deadline, we'll still put it on to make sure it goes on our next meeting in two weeks so we can approve it then.
Yes.
So, yeah, if you need a few extra days, that's fine. We will, if we have to, we'll walk it on. Normally, we don't do that, but it is an emergency and I believe it's very important that we do that.
Not everybody does flat roofs like this.
Okay. At this time, is there any further discussion before we go ahead and vote on this to refer it back? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have, we are on 8D, so everybody can follow along because we did skip around there. This is Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority Board Appointments.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Mr. Ali Deeb as the primary commissioner for the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, DUWA Board, and Mr. Robert Conrad as the alternative representative as outlined in 8D.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to welcome Mr. Robert Conrad. I think he is our new DPW director.
Okay. We've got a motion on the table right now, Councilman.
Go ahead.
Okay. Is there any discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Councilman Abdal Haq, would you like to have me stand up?
Yes, welcome to our city and, you know, we wish you good luck.
Thank you very much and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Commission on Business Appointment.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Mr. Nathaniel Khan to the recently established Commission on Business. Term to expire January 2nd, 2023 is outlined in item 8E.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Annapolis High School Annual Homecoming Parade, Friday, October 22nd, 2021.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Give it to one of the aldermen.
Councilman Coniston, it's his school.
Absolutely.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the request from Annapolis High School to hold their annual homecoming parade on Friday, October 22nd at 5:30 PM as outlined in 8F.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Wenzel, who's also an alumni of Annapolis. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah.
Well, if you said the councilman, that's his school, I'd like to know how long ago was that? Like, how many decades ago?
Just a decade or two.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Crestwood.
Wow. Hey, wait a minute.
Crestwood High School Annual Homecoming Parade, Friday, September 24th, 2021.
Madam Chair, I've got seniority on Crestwood School. And I'm sorry, Moe Badun.
I agree.
I'll give it to the seniors.
That was in 1800s. That's not fair.
That's right. That's right. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the request from Crestwood High School to hold their annual homecoming parade on February... On, excuse me, on Friday, September 24th, 2021 at 5:30 PM as outlined in 8G.
Support.
Supported by another Crestwood graduate, Councilman Badun, and I'm also a graduate of Crestwood. Is there any discussion in regards to this?
Can I do one for Fortson High School or...
Wrong city.
I got one in the air in the audience with me.
Oh.
Go to Dearborn.
You're in the wrong city, honey. All right. Any further discussion before we vote on this?
What?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have with Comptroller Jawad, 2020-2021 Budget Amendments.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the following budget amendment to the 2020-2021 budget as outlined in 8H.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdal Haq. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have with Treasurer Hicks Clayton, Plant Moran, Proposed Engagement Letter and Professional Services Agreement, Temporary Finance Assistance.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the proposed engagement letter and professional service agreement with Plant Moran for temporary finance assistance services as defined in scope of services. In addition, authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in 8I.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdal Haq. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under reports from city officials, we have City Clerk Senior, City Council Motion 20 dash... I'm sorry, 21-307 Renewal of Property and Casualty Insurance and Workers Compensation Insurance Contract Authorized Signatures.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city the previously approved contracts by City Council Motion 21-307 with Carraco Magellan Insurance Agency, CMIA, for renewal of property and casualty insurance and work compensation as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdal Haq. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have City Clerk Senior, City Council Motion 21-308, Plant Moran Pre-Audit Services to Authorize Signature.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city by City Council Motion 21-308 with Plant Moran, the professional service agreement for the pre-audit as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdal Haq. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is Fire Chief Brogan, Permission to Have a Building Evaluation of the Fire Station.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve an assessment to determine the exact nature of the issues at the fire headquarters station at the cost of $34,000 as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdal Haq. Is there any questions?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I think we should just move ahead and get rid of that building and build a new one. That's a dangerous building and I'm very worried about all of you in it, especially with the aftermath of what happened in Florida with a building collapse. I was in that building and it, and it's just unbelievable.
Go ahead, Chief.
Well, we've just had, we're having continuing problems show up. We're just with the recent rains, we have some puddles that have shown up on the floor out of nowhere. Doors aren't opening anymore. It's just continuing to get worse. And we walked through with the mayor and city engineer, Ali Deeb, is also...
The chair?
Councilman, I have Councilman Abdullah next.
He's always ahead of me. But that's... Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead. So, Chief, just quickly, number one, on the cost of this $34,000 on either you or Ali Deeb, is, I just want to make sure, is that within line of this type of an assessment?
Yeah, it's actually...
A lot of money for an assessment. And I just want to make sure, is that normal?
It is. And this is, it's all state bid pricing. That's something else that made us more comfortable. There actually, our representative from Partners Architects is here with us too, David. So, I don't know if any of you guys want to make a comment on that.
I gave you a bid for free. Get rid of the building. You guys are not safe.
So, once again, doing things a little differently. We're looking at all the options. It isn't just to say that the building is beyond its useful life or it's dangerous. We're looking at options. So, we're taking into account end of useful life for all the mechanical, the roofing system, anything that we need to include as part of the proposed renovation. So, we're looking at options. So, I met with the company and the chief and it's a detailed study, if you will. We're looking at all of our options. And it may be the renovation, if we come up with a, with a good engineered solution, not what we had in the past. You know, we spent $10,000, $15,000 on someone saying, you know, I put a hole in the ground and the water table is too high. That wasn't an engineering study by any means. We're looking at a detailed study with, from a professional company, looking at every option we have. So, we'll present us with an option A with a price, option B with a price, option C, and we'll come back and say, you know, based on sound engineering principle, this is what we need to do.
So, the second question I had is, at one point in, I can't remember which council meeting it was, but it was a little while ago, but before the pandemic, we had had talk, if you recall, Chief, in regards to the company that built it, the company that designed it, the company that did the oversight on it, and whether we had any legal grounds to go after them to compensate the, compensate the city for these problems. Because we have a $34,000 study here and that, I mean, to me, looks like a lot of money. But again, I'm relying on your expertise and that's within line, which is fine.
It is.
But that's just a study. But that's just a study, and eventually they're going to come back, and who knows what the cost is going to be, whether it's going to be 100, 200, 300, half million, who knows? With that being the case, why are we not, we had, we had at one point talked about looking into going after the company that built it, designed it, et cetera, et cetera. Somebody's at fault here, obviously.
Councilman Abdullah, we have Corporate Counsel wants to say something.
Yes, I would suggest that actually addressing that issue in a closed session, I would actually say we should get the assessment done first, and then if it looks like there might be questions in terms of liability, perhaps at that point, we can end up having a closed session, because otherwise we might be.
I respect that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Abdul Haq.
He answered my questions. I wanted to make sure that we have more than one option.
Councilman Wenzel.
These issues in these, at the fire station, are they, are they specifically at one location or is it the entire building? Is it where we keep the fire engines or is it just the office building or?
Oh, it's throughout the whole station. They found, they found, there's varying levels of movement in different parts of the station, but if you know where the apparatus room is, where the trucks are, and then where most of the people, where the living quarters are, that's the worst area by far. Ceiling tiles will just drop because of the movement of the grid. We thought the apparatus room was okay with the exception of some cracks that run along both ends of it, but actually where the pillars are, we found it's also been pushed up as well. So it seems to be throughout the entire station, yeah.
Must condemned.
That's what I said.
Okay, any further discussion before we vote on this?
Yeah, I support Councilman Muscat on just changing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Ordinance Enforcement and Animal Control Director Dishroom, Permission to Demo Garage Located at 4459 McKinley.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the payment of the court ordered demolition of the garage at 4459 McKinley Street in Dearborn Heights to Olson Cement Works in the amount of $3,000. The homeowners, the homeowner is responsible for reimbursement of this payment, and it is a court ordered demolition, and if not paid in the timely manner, it will go on as property taxes as outlined in 9D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Haq, is there any discussion? Councilman Muscat.
Is Olson Cement licensed to do stuff demolitions? They're a cement company. I mean, would we know if there's any asbestos there or?
I don't believe there is, but as far as I know, they're licensed, insured with the city, or licensed and insured and allowed to do business with the city.
Well, I understand that, but I know, you know, if it's an older garage, it's going to have lead paint, could have asbestos in it.
We could look into that if we had to, I don't.
I think we should table this and move this because that could have lead paint and asbestos in it.
Okay, are you suggesting we get it inspected first before we decide to demolish it?
I would think the city should do their due diligence and not just knock it down. I mean, even if you go to Home Depot and want a garage door replaced, they come out and say you got lead paint, they come out and assess that stuff.
Yeah, they did.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I, I think we can approve this subject to Olson Cement and our ordinance department checking into that. I don't know if it'll have asbestos, but lead paint, it's lead paint, they, if they're demolishing it, the lead paint's not going anywhere.
We have other properties in the south end that are currently on hold because of that, and they found that before they, before they demoed them, they've been sitting for some time now. So this may delay that, which I don't have an issue with, but this has been sitting for, since last September. This is a court order from last September, just so you're aware.
Councilman, did you want to redo your motion?
Yes, I do. I'd like to send this back to the, refer this back to administration to make sure that they know what that was.
We've got a motion on the floor, though.
Oh.
We have to entertain that.
I amend the motion to refer back to the administration to check for lead paint and asbestos.
Okay. Support by Councilman Badun, is there any further discussion before we vote on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Conston, Donate Old Fitness Room Televisions at Richard A. Young.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badun.
Yep. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the cross to donate the old and outdated televisions from the Richard A. Young Center Fitness Room when they are taken down and new ones are installed as outlined in 9E. Thank you so much for that.
Support by Councilman Abdul Haq, is there any discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, I have Park and Recreation Director Conston, Repair of Van Houten Splash Pad.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the repair of Van Houten Splash Pad, including installation of a new controller by American Recreation Services, the only certified Vortex installer in Michigan. The amount of $13,830.50 will be taken out of funds left from the 2020-2021 recreation budget is outlined in item 9F.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Director, this splash pad, its design is very poor, it doesn't recirculate the water, the water comes out and then goes down the storm drain.
It, when it was installed, that was something that Ken Gribble had looked into, and it wasn't, at that time, he decided it wasn't the way to go. There was an issue, I'm trying to remember exactly what it was, but I think it had something to do with the system and the cost of it possibly.
Did we look into the cost on doing it? Because I mean, it's just like the water comes up and splashes on the kids, it goes down the drain and goes away, and more water comes in.
Yeah, this fix right now is basically, most of the money goes towards the controller, probably the rest of it goes towards fixing a lot of the cracks, but this fall, we actually have to do a whole redo. I can see how extensive that's going to be, and if that's a possibility, then.
I think with this water consumption rates that we're talking about in the, I think we should look into just.
Yeah, well, the largest reason that we limit the use is because of the cost of the water, and I can definitely look into it based on what we have to tear up, because there's a lot of possibility that we have leaking underneath the pad, and that's what's causing the cracks.
Plus, I have, I would wonder if we recirculate the water, we would have to sanitize it in some way too.
But they have a regular system that they use, yeah.
So that's why it was probably not cost effective when Director Gribble put it in there.
And I, I don't remember the discussion on that, but I know that they talked about it, but I think it was after it was installed and done, which was too late, so.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdul Haq.
You're not done yet. We propose to change the whole system there, and we're going to tear down, I think, that structure.
The play structure? Actually, we are going to demo the whole thing this fall, and then we're going to install a brand new play structure in the spring.
Is there anything available on the market? One system which has the splash, water splash, and all these things together in one unit?
Actually, there are a lot of people that want to play on the equipment, probably that don't want to get wet if it's a cold day, so they don't usually do both, it's one or the other. And actually, they complement each other the way that they are now. It's always been a nice play structure, and there's a lot of times that you'll have issues putting both of them in together. I mean, you're going to have more issues because the play structure actually is a lot larger too. So, I mean, I don't think that that is really possible, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we vote on this? At this time, Councilman Abdullah is.
The restroom.
In the restroom. Should we wait for him to vote or just go ahead and vote?
It's okay, we can vote.
All right, we're going to vote.
I think we're going to be okay.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, next item on the agenda is Park and Recreation Director Conston, Request for Parks and Recreation Department Credit Card.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badun.
Yeah. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Treasurer and/or Controller's Office to issue a department credit card to Parks and Recreation Department per whatever policy they chose in regards to reporting and with a limit of $1,400 as outlined in 9G.
Support.
Madam Chair.
Support by Councilman Wenzel. Okay, we are on 9G. Go ahead, Councilman Badun.
And I'm not, I'm just asking a simple question. Did we not already vote on this and we turned this down to all of council, I mean, all the department heads?
I think we did, yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
We did.
Okay. Can I also ask, and maybe Director Conston can explain to me, is there a reason why this is needed?
It is, it is because of the trips. We do a lot of the registrations, we did a lot of the tickets online, and if we don't have that flexibility to be able to do that, we'll get poor seating, we'll get poor placement, we'll get poor times, and we won't be able to actually get tickets for a lot of the events that we go to on a normal basis, on a yearly basis.
My second question to you is, how did we do it in the past?
We used my credit card.
Okay, and then you're recompensated for.
I'm being honest.
Can we, see, my only issue on this one is, and I understand where you're coming from, but it's, we say yes to you, then it's.
Opens the door.
You know, opens the door for everybody else. Now, I initially was okay for it, the last time, I know Councilman Muscat, he kind of broadened my horizon on it a little bit, but I think that's where it puts, it puts us in this position where now we're looking at every other department head and saying, you know, I understand.
And I, I get what you're saying, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't come to you again to express to you the issues and the concerns and the problems and, you know, the program being not as good as what it's been through years past.
Madam Chair.
I, I think at this point, I agree with Director Conston. I do go on a lot of the senior trips. This is for our residents, this will benefit our residents directly in giving them better seats and.
It does.
Getting the trips booked faster, and it's not fair that she should have to put it on her credit card and be reimbursed afterwards.
Can I ask you another question then, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can the Treasurer chairman, can she explain to us, can we go through something with the Treasurer where she can reach out and say, hey, this needs to be booked and the Treasurer can book it to?
Does it stand up proof?
I mean, I'm.
We, we actually, if I can talk, we actually tried that once, and it actually ends up being very cumbersome for her. We would be doing it a lot more than one time, and we only did it one time, for our senior jubilee, and, you know, it just, it will really tie our hands in a lot of the stuff that we, we've been offering the seniors on a regular basis. I mean, there's one big trip that we, we go to this show every year, and they don't take a city check, and there's a lot of venues like that. It doesn't matter if it's a city or a personal, they won't take it.
If the Treasurer has your hand up.
Understandable. Treasurer, would you like to speak on this?
I do want to add, to concur with what Director Conston has said, it adds extra layers, it adds extra time, and sometimes that doesn't work out, and the tracking mechanism internally becomes a challenge as well. So, and I, but I did want to add that when we talk about personal credit cards, we cannot use or approve people using personal credit cards. That was a Plant Moran audit flagged issue, which is why we said no more personal credit cards. So I just wanted to reiterate that, but Director Conston is correct. I mean, it adds extra layers of bureaucracy to it.
It will definitely hurt our programs as well. There's a lot of times, we can't do our shopping to the last minute because we don't know what our count's going to be for the event. So if we aren't able to go out and get more paper plates, more napkins, more whatever we need, and if we can't get this special detail that we decided last minute, it hurts the programs as well. I mean, I'm sure most all of you have put parties on, and you know, there's always those last minute details that you have to get.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah.
Well, I just want to say, any director, and you know how I felt about this last time too, any director that would risk their job at 50, 60, 70, $80,000 a year for 1,400 bucks, I, it had to be A, crazy, B, obviously, we have a police department that would investigate it on the drop of a dime, and C, even if she used, which I don't believe in personally somebody using their own credit cards, I think it's so wrong, period. I, I, you know, it shouldn't mix your personal business.
I didn't have a choice.
No, no, I understand, no, no, I'm not saying you did something wrong, I'm saying it's not fair for you to have to do that. It, it's just so wrong on, on every level. And so to me, I'm perfectly okay with this, and nobody's going to risk their jobs for 1,400 bucks.
So I just want you saying, and I don't, and I don't say it's Director Conston, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, but we don't know the next person that's coming, depends on when I'm not here or you're not here.
Then we can cancel it anytime, because you got to remember also with tickets, you know, sometimes like, for example, concerts, I know we haven't been in concerts in years, well, a year or whatever, but you know, you'll have Journey or whoever, you know, and then they're on sale tomorrow, and then everybody buys up everything, and you got nothing left for the, if we, if she's going to have to go through the governmental protocols, I mean, that could be a week and a half before she gets a check. You know, because obviously, 10 tickets.
It's longer than a week and a half. It's a lot longer than a week and a half. It happens after the council meeting, so.
I move we approve this.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask that we just keep it to questions, Councilman Abdul Haq.
Madam Chair, I see Mariana, she wants to say something about this subject, if you don't mind.
Sorry, thank you. I did want to add that the Treasury Department and the Finance Department has continuously worked on this credit card issue. We do have to get credit cards for the department heads, and we are very close with a very good option from Comerica, so we, for the next city council meeting, you will see us calling for a special meeting to discuss this and have a presentation by the credit card company in order to try to get those credit cards in the hands of our department heads.
Councilman Muscat.
I understand all of this, and I, question one, is it $1,400 a month or $1,400 for every purchase? You make 10 purchases in a month.
Max.
A month, yeah.
That's a month, okay.
Yeah, for a billing cycle.
Now, as, as a councilperson here, I'm okay with going back to the credit cards for department heads, like Councilman Abdullah said, for, for the department heads. I want to see those statements at the end of the month. I want to see them at least, or bi-weekly, because, you know, I want to see that stuff. And $1,400 is $100 under our limit, but I still want to see it, it's still money coming from the taxpayers.
Okay, I've got Councilman Wenzel.
Well, I don't see any problem in doing this, specifically, she gave us details on why she needs it. If every department head wants to come and state their case to us, then we could do that, but I, I think this is a legitimate cause here, and I'm going to vote yes on that.
Okay, at this time.
One last question, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, and I just, just because I want to be very transparent on this, and Director Conston, this isn't something you expect to use $1,400 every single month.
No.
Make that clear to the record.
No, and, and the deal is, we probably, most of the time, won't even be anywhere near that, except for if it's tickets for a trip, like the North Bridge Church trip. I'm not even sure if that would cover it, but what, you know, I've already worked out a way that we would just go ahead and pay it off earlier and, and get more tickets if we needed it. That would be the only trip that would come close to being over. And then the other ones shouldn't be near that. We've worked it out pretty good, where most of them, we've been able to not pay for our tickets a month before, and if we're going to places like the Tigers trips or things like that, we're able to give them a count 30 days in advance and give them a city check. But not every venue's like that, the private venues don't even want checks, and those are the ones that we're concerned about.
And I think you've paved the way right now for the rest of the directors.
Okay, and another thing I'd like to say too, and remind the residents, is even though she is charging the tickets.
We get money back.
We, as residents, pay to go on those trips, so it does, we in essence are paying that card off anyways, because I've went on a lot of senior trips, and I, you pay, you know, and so I understand. Councilman Abdul Haq.
My comment is, I would like, you know, the administration to bring the issue back to the table, because if we trust one head of department.
We're on a motion.
I understand. I am voting for it, yes.
Okay, at this time, are we ready to vote on the motion on the table? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, let's move on, because we do have a long agenda here, that's why I'm trying to keep it to the subject. Next, we have Police Chief Myers, Return of Bid Bonds.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Comptroller's Office to return bid bonds to three companies that have been eliminated from the process of body worn cameras, in car camera system. The three companies that have been eliminated are Digital Alley, Government Direct, Inc., and Comm Source, Inc. as outlined in 9H.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Haq, is there any questions in regards to this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdul Haq.
I do have an issue, we, I think we have $850,000 grant, which we need basically to submit some kind of papers to get it, that we have specific programs, and we have affirmative action in the city and policies which are requested by the agency who's going to give us this grant. I think Elizabeth left, I would like to know if we have such policy, you know, in the city which allow us to submit for this grant, otherwise we're going to lose it.
Okay, who would like to answer that?
Hi, we did look into that matter. Today, we actually had a meeting with Gary Voyles, who's the one writing the grant for us, and he did contact the state, and we did not require a lot of the documentation that we originally thought we did, so we are currently gathering all the documents that are necessary, and we did meet with Director Sabota Perry.
So we're going to get the grant.
Yes, and we should have the documentation necessary for applying.
Thank you.
So, I, I do want to clarify you, sir, we're applying for the grant. It doesn't mean we're going to get it. We're hoping to get it.
I understand. I understand.
Let's be very clear on that. We have not received any grant yet, we're applying for the grant.
Okay, any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, under Ordinances and Resolutions, we have Mayor Bazey, Second Reading of Proposed Ordinance H-21-04, Zoning Ordinance Amendment for 24045 Warren.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council move the proposed ordinance number H-21-04, an ordinance to amend the city code chapters 36, chapter singular, 36 zoning chapter of the city of Dearborn Heights, to amend the zoning map and district boundaries established
established under section thirty-six dash fifty-two, to reclassify certain properties hereinafter described be considered read for the second time and become effective upon publication as outlined in item eleven A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Baydun?
And so, I just want to, you know, because I was looking at this, and I just wanted, maybe I can ask this to the mayor. I know that there were some areas on Warren that were being told that can only be set for office space. Is that what we're going to do, and I'll say we're going to rezone and say, you know, these certain places that we've only zoned to be office spaces are no longer having to only be office spaces? We can look at different avenues to have different kind of businesses? Is that what this is doing?
No, this actually was, correct me if I'm wrong, it was actually, this is a gas station. It was not an office.
Yeah, this is specifically the property.
Well, the gentleman spoke on Zoom, I believe, on the corner. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Corporate Council Miaki, there was a previous, previously a gas station there, and it was my understanding that it was contaminated. So, have they returned the soil back to where it should be before they can put another gas station there?
I'm not aware if they have, although the zoning doesn't necessarily deal with that. They would do the remediation and have to end up complying with other of the state rules.
Okay, yeah, I just was curious, because this is the first, because I know Tim Hortons across the street was a gas station, and when it became contaminated, they could never put a gas station back there again. That's why Tim Hortons is there, and the same with Einstein Brothers down on Telegraph. That was a Marathon gas station that was contaminated.
Madam Chair?
He really is in the way.
Just to be clear, I believe, but I just want to clarify, I believe this first one, 24045 Warren Avenue, was the area east of Telegraph. The second ordinance is, I believe, the one that's for the area west of Telegraph.
Okay, that was a residence, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, one of them was the area right across, right next to Hedwig Cemetery, and then the other one's the one on the corner of Telegraph and Warren.
Correct, Maybourne.
So, I just want to make sure we're not talking about two different ones, that's all.
All right, at this time, is there any further questions before we take a vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Mayor Bazey, second reading of proposed ordinance H-21-05, zoning ordinance amendment for 7018 Maybourne.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the proposed ordinance number H-21-05, an ordinance to amend the city code, chapter thirty-six, zoning chapter of the city of Dearborn Heights, to amend its own map and district boundaries established under section thirty-six dash fifty-two, to reclassify certain properties as hereinafter described be considered read for the second time and be effective upon publication as outlined in eleven B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Corporation Council Miaki, resolution accepting long-term maintenance of storm water management system for Bellagio Banquet LLC.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution accepting long-term maintenance of storm water management system, Bellagio Banquet LLC as follows, as outlined in item, in eleven C. Now therefore be resolved that the city of Dearborn Heights assumes jurisdiction over and accepts responsibility for the long-term maintenance of storm water management system or systems at the project pursuant to the Wayne County ordinance, the administrative rules, the plan, the storm wa, I'm sorry, and the storm water construction approval issued by Wayne County. Be it further resolved that approval be and is hereby granted authorizing Public Service Administrator Robert Conrad to execute on behalf of the city of Dearborn Heights permit number M-50025 dash one slash review number R17 dash 598 for long-term maintenance of storm water management system issued by Wayne County for the project.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constan?
Yes.
Fine. Corporate Council Miaki?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I actually included a proposed motion at the top of page two that pertains both the agreement and the resolution. I don't know.
It's on page two.
Yeah, it's on page two, at the very top.
So, in corporate. These were the recommended motions by the clerk, and I did see the one that you had on page two. So, for the clerk and the council, which one do you want to read? I could read either one.
Well, I would, I would recommend the one that I gave, and I would also ask the city clerk, and I have asked for this before, that I be given your recommended motions so that I don't have to say that something is wrong with the recommended motion. If I see these in advance, maybe it can spare us some inconvenience, like right now, I don't want to say, geez, you just made a bad motion, but the motion that should be made should really be the one that's on the top of page, page two.
Madam Chair? Maybe we could incorporate the, page two. Resolution on page.
It'll be the motion.
Well, I did, but you can't incorporate it, because then now you're going to have two different things. I just want, which one do you want to use? Do you want to do the one on page two?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Eleven C, all right. Hey, an attorney wrote this, you know anything, it's going to be fast. All right.
It's on the back of the.
Yeah, no, I'm just going to the right one here.
Here.
On eleven C, correct?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. All right, motion by Dave Abdallah, seconded by?
Which seconded?
Robert Constan, to approve the resolution accepting long-term maintenance of storm water management system, Bellagio Banquet LLC, and the agreement of maintenance of storm water management system. Bellagio Banquet LLC, subject to the conditions stated in this motion. Additionally, subject to the conditions stated in this motion, the mayor and the city clerk shall be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. The approval of the resolution and agreement and authorization of signatures on the agreement shall be conditioned upon Bellagio Banquet LLC first approving and executing the agreement. Thereafter, upon the agreement being approved and executed by Bellagio Banquet LLC, the city shall execute the agreement and issue the resolution.
Yes, thank you.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constan. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under new business, we have business license renewal.
Madam Chair?
I got to read it first.
Go ahead.
Okay, next, we have business license renewal. First, we have Connect Auto Sales LLC, located at 4413 South Beach Daily. Next, we have Cooper's Garage, located at 21244 Van Born. And then, we have High Grade Steakhouse, located at 252404 Road, and La Marina Auto Sales, located at 8230 North Telegraph. Councilman?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Constan?
I move that the business license, business licenses of Connect Auto Sales, Cooper's Garage, High Grade Steakhouse, and La Marina Auto Sales be renewed as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we move on to public, I'm sorry, to comments from council members at the table.
Chair?
Councilman Wenzel?
I have two comments or issues. Both of them are pertaining to the flooding, one of the Ekor's Creek and the other the Rouge River. In the past, I've asked the previous administration to give us monthly updates on progress made in resolving the flooding issues on Ekor's Creek, and we never got anything back. Like I told Television News the other day, that once the cameras are gone and all the debris is picked up, so does the effort or any action taken on the flood issues, they go away, too. Us on the south end, we've experienced this. Every year, we have floods. Every other year, we have major floods. And it took a widespread flooding issue throughout Dearborn Heights to make this a hot topic throughout the city. It's been an issue in the south end for fifty or sixty years. So, we got to do something about this right now. And a year and a half ago, we had congressional people at a meeting at Annapolis High School, and they outlined a plan, a five-year plan, what they were going to do to alleviate this flooding issue. They were going to put a big retention basin at the old incinerator plant, and it was going to take five years. It was a bid process, an engineering process. So, we've gone a year and a half now, so we should be a year and a half into this process. And I want the mayor to give us updates in every meeting, what's going on. I know probably there hasn't been any progress in a year and a half, I'm sure. I'm sure our congressional people were just giving us lip service at that meeting. I haven't heard of one thing getting done on this. So, mayor, I'm asking you to, you know, look into this. The mayor has been really, really vigilant on going out and seeing what's happening, now the problems we're having with the flooding, and I don't want to steal his thunder, but I'm sure you might talk about the forms to fill out. But this new administration is really working hard on this issue, and I just don't want it just to go away. As soon as all the debris's picked up and all the camera, the television stations, news stations are gone, that this issue is not gone, too. We need to stay on this. It's an issue now, it's an issue throughout Dearborn Heights. So, let's keep on this. Every month, we have to have updates, some kind of progress every month, and not just, we're looking into it. We want to see some progress every month. The other issue is the Rouge River. I'm a watershed steward commissioner, along with Bob Constan over here, and recently, or in the last few years, Dearborn Heights purchased the Warren Valley Golf Course, and the Rouge River runs right through the golf course. And there was some kind of stipulation, I talked to Corporation Council about the contract, if it's what was ever said about developing this property, and we determined that we're never going to develop it, but I was looking for an actual contract, what it said in there. So, that's something we need, to see the actual contract. I've never seen it. Has anybody seen the contract that says, no, never, any development?
The contract actually does not address that point, and Councilman, I don't know if I'm ahead of you on the point, but as you recall, we discussed the possibility of a charter amendment to potentially specifically protect that property in terms of sale and development, and I thought, both of us thought that was a good idea, and I thought you were potentially going to spearhead that and bring that up. But I don't want to steal your thunder, I'm just saying.
Oh, you did, no.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, that's fine, because I was going to mention it, you didn't steal any thunder, I'm glad you mentioned it. But there's a group, the Friends of the Rouge River, that are really concerned about specifically an easement around the Rouge, and it's called, it's called a conservancy easement, and this is something that the mayor can sign. This stipulates there's definitely no development within this certain area. They're really, they really care about this, and they're thinking that, since no action has been taken, that there might be some kind of, something in the works about some kind of development.
If I may address that, in the past, I've looked into that issue in terms of that type of an easement. The difficulty is there has to, the holder of that easement generally expect a donation, and they expect a donation of like six figures more. Yes, like a hundred thousand dollars, and that's why that didn't get anywhere.
Yeah, you mentioned that, too.
Very expensive.
I looked into that, and that's basically for inspections, you know, making sure things, the area's clean and stuff like that.
The way it was explained to me, because I actually spoke to the gentleman, was that it would be a matter of having that so that they have the resources to oversee the easement into the future. So, it struck me that that was something that potentially would require us to make that kind of a commitment. The charter, however, would just be the citizens would be able to do that, or other people would be right in the charter.
No, that would be, that's a good thing for several reasons. If it's a charter amendment, the residents would have to vote on that.
That's right.
And that would make the residents aware of the situation, and I'm sure most residents, you know, if not almost all, would agree on this. So, I'm going to have the Friends of the Rouge draw something up and see what they would like, and we could, I don't know how long a charter amendment might take, it might take a year or so, but maybe there's something we could do to ease their minds a little bit with something.
I got a question. What about a conservatory for the property?
Well, basically, it's kind of the same sort of thing. You're going to have to fund it.
But it'd be a lot quicker, wouldn't it?
It might be, but you have to fund it.
Okay, and how much would that cost approximately?
Well, that was the estimate we got before the one other time that we looked into it, and it was over a hundred thousand dollars. It was kind of like, whoa, is there a better way to end up doing this that would not end up requiring the city to put out a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, because I think it's important, we do preserve that as a golf course, because that is our biggest flood plain in Dearborn Heights, and if you developed it, we would have a lot more flooding than we already had.
Sure, I mean, again, whatever the direction of the mayor and council is with regard to that, you know, I thought there was a cost issue, and the charter provision could end up dealing with that issue, and potentially other properties in the city that the city would want to end up.
There's some very wise and educated people on the Friends of the Rouge, we'll come back on this.
Yeah, because I've met with them, too. I know exactly. They're very good, their heart is into preserving that as a golf course.
Thanks.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Awesome, I just have a couple of things here. I want to first start off by actually thanking our director, Lee Gavin, former chief. I want to tell you guys, since the flood has started, I have been bothering him nonstop. Every single day up till last night about 10:00 PM, I believe, I sent him a text, and anytime somebody bothers me, which I'm not, I'm not, nobody's bothering me, but when somebody reaches out to me, I bother our director. So, I want to thank him for that. I also want to thank the administration. I know you guys have been very vocal about what you guys are doing and the steps you guys are doing. However, there are still debris in the city of Dearborn Heights throughout neighborhoods. I know that, you know, and I'm just comparing, kind of like what Councilman Abdullah does often, he compares Dearborn and Dearborn Heights to some of the services, because, you know, we know what's happening in our neighboring cities. Is there a way that we can get somebody to start coming out, like the way the city of Dearborn has, where we can get a second company, aside from GFL, to come out, help pick up the debris like Dearborn is doing? And if so, I'd love to give the support to the administration to be able to go out there, just get the debris picked up. Like, I think at this point, it's been over, what's, twelve days now since the flooding has happened, people's debris is still outside of their home. And it's still raining, it's stinking, there's maggots, people are calling and complaining. And honest to God, when I drive through neighborhoods, I'm embarrassed to see that all the debris still hasn't been picked up. So, I don't know what we have to do here, but if the mayor can enlighten us a little bit, and just tell me, is there anything you can do or we can do to make it easier for maybe increasing funds, whatever it is that needs to be done?
Well, definitely, we need to increase funds if I can, you know, by the council, if they want to authorize us to. There's other companies that we can reach out to, because, you know, GFL right now, you know, as we talked in the past, they commit certain amount of trucks to clean up the city, and with that, you have people calling in sick, you know, obviously with what's going on with unemployment and, you know, with the rates. People rather stay home, some people rather stay home than work. So, they get a lot of calls, they can't, you know, staff, get full staff. So, with that, you know, they commit to a certain amount of trucks to help us clean, and then all of a sudden, you know, a lot of them don't show up. So, then, we have to worry about them picking up, you know, the yard waste, the regular garbage pickups. Then, you have to commit more trucks to come in and try to pick up the debris, so we have to go to other companies. So, if the council authorizes, I can start first thing tomorrow, reach out to other entities to see if they can help.
That I go ahead and put forward a motion to allow the administration to do whatever it takes to get the debris, and only the debris, and the compost debris picked up in the city of Dearborn Heights?
Councilman, there might be a better solution before we move forward with this? I did some research. In the past, our guys in the DPW used our dump trucks to remove flood items from the curb and take them to a staging area at the DPW yard, where then the yard waste, or the waste company would come and pick it up at one central location. It was more efficient than our GFL driving up and down streets to find the debris.
And so, I want you to know, and I'm not asking for GFL, actually.
Council Chair?
No, no, I'm saying it's our DPW has dump trucks that can do this.
With the amount of staff that we have right now with DPW, I don't advise, our DPW is already stretched thin. We still have to maintain other services in the city, and they're spread thin to begin with, so we need to go out.
I just want to make this clear, and I can, and I'm sure our director, Lee, can say this and can tell you guys, I swear to you, there's so much debris still out there. It needs to be picked up. So, whatever it takes that needs to be done, please, it needs to be done. Like, I know that Dearborn right now is outsourcing different, other companies outside of GFL, and I'm going to be honest with you, GFL, I had a couple of situations where I had to reach out to our director, and they actually held that our director, and they said, no, we're not picking up this debris, like, we can't have that. At the end of the day, we just want to get the streets cleaned up, and the longer it sits there, the more complaints are going to happen, and the more angry residents are going to be.
Well, Councilman Baydun, I mean, if you guys put the motion, I'll start working tomorrow.
I'd like to.
We got to ask clerk if it's proper to do it now, because we've already kind of got past the business section of our meeting.
And then, this is strictly because of, you know, the issue that's happening. We haven't had a city council meeting since.
We got to do it properly.
I know you've done it before, I'll defer to Corporation Council.
I know you've done it before. I'll defer to Corporation Council. I know that they've added on motions before, even though they weren't on the agenda.
You could add it on as a body. You could suspend the rules and add to.
So it would be going against the rules, then? We'd have to suspend them in order to do that?
For the purpose of adding to taking a vote on this particular issue. You can do that.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead, make the motion.
I make the motion to allow the administration to do whatever it takes to pick up the remaining debris in the city of Dearborn Heights.
Counselor Chair, I move that we suspend our rules for this time only.
There you go.
To let Councilman Mo Badun to make this motion. Thank you so much.
Do I get a support on that?
Support.
A vote.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, Counselor Chair. So the only thing we got to be careful on, this is the legalese. Whatever it takes, that's too open ended.
Yeah, I just said for this one time.
It doesn't matter, you still got to cap something. You can't leave it open ended. With due respect to the mayor and the administration, we can't keep it open ended, like, hey, go spend whatever you want. Let's put a set amount, then I'd be more comfortable.
Counselor Chair, I move to suspend our rules for this meeting and this meeting only, for an emergency motion, for Mo Badun to make a motion to pick up trash.
I'm not picking up trash.
For Mo Badun's motion to allow trash to be picked up. Thank you.
So do I get a second on that?
Second.
Second by Councilman Badun, because it was his idea?
Let's get so technical here.
Is there any discussion, Councilman Abdul Haq?
I agree with Councilman Abdullah. We cannot give a blanket check.
No, I think he's doing right now, he's doing right now to suspend the rules.
We're just suspending the rules, so then we can put the motion on.
Excuse me, there should be two motions.
This isn't the motion.
There should be two motions, one that Councilman Muscat is making to suspend the rules. You need to vote on that.
Yeah, let me, we are suspending the rules, so then we can move next to make a motion to vote on doing the cleanup.
Then I think is where you want to put a limit on the price.
Okay, one person, please.
So what you could do is you could set them up.
Wait, wait, no. Vote on this first.
First, we got to vote to suspend.
On the table. Okay, we got a motion on the table. Let's not confuse it. Okay, at this time, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. So we have suspended the rules temporarily for just this, for just this meeting, so we can make an emergency motion, which Councilman Badun will do.
Before I do that motion, I want to ask our new DPW director, what do you think a good cap amount would be? I'm not saying that we have to use a million dollars, but what do you think a good cap would be?
Robert Conrad, Director for DPW. It's really hard to put a cap on something when you can't, I mean, you'd have to run an assessment of what's actually out there to be picked up. You know, looking.
We don't need that much.
I would say we shouldn't go over $250,000, you know, for disposal fees and pickup fees. But that's just, I mean, a real vague guess. I mean, without actually doing a visual inspection of all the debris that's out there. And, I mean, GFL has done a fair amount of pickup already. A lot of it is just very scattered and random. I don't know, maybe leak in the labirinto a little bit on what he thinks is out there, from his experience, from what we've already picked up with GFL. But it's really hard to put a hard number on it. But I would think, you know, 250,000.
Go ahead, Mayor, what do you think?
Madam Chair.
Councilman, Mayor's first.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. So Dearborn had close to 10,000 homes. Okay, we have about close to 14, 1500, let's say 1500 homes. So what I was told, the council passed for two and a half million dollars for 10,000 homes, 10,000 homes to be cleared. So that's Dearborn, obviously. They have a bigger budget than us. So with 1500, we have to just do the math. I think, you know, anything, you know, we can come back, have a special meeting. But I mean, we should have at least, you know, 300, 400,000 cap, so we can clean up the city. Where nobody's here in the city hall as much, obviously, we are. You know, we've been here seven days a week, you know, and we see residents walking into the city hall, they're outraged. As you mentioned, there's rats going into the debris. So we do have to clear it. It's sanitary, it's a health risk, and it has to get done yesterday. So if you guys are going to argue about, you know, something like that, I don't know what to say. But we have to select.
295?
I guess, you know, whatever we decide today, if we find out it's not enough, I have no problem coming back and even put more in. I mean, we can put a cap on, but we can always change it. It's like the budget, it's fluid.
I agree. I agree.
It's not set in stone.
And Counselor Chair.
Mayor.
Some of that money, we probably, it's not 100% guaranteed, but we're keeping a tab of anything spent on the debris. If FEMA and the President of the United States declared it as a national disaster, we might be able to retrieve everything that we spent on the flood.
Well said.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Abdul Haq is next.
Okay, I believe we spend around 250,000 a month for garbage pickup in the city. Is that number correct?
It's closer to, yeah, it's about 250.
Do we need one month to pick up what's left, or we just have a week or two?
Councilman, can I?
Go ahead, Mayor.
So we can't rely on, the problem is, we can't rely on one company. We have to subcontract the debris pickup with various companies. So one of the things, Dearborn Heights was not the only city that was flooded. So Dearborn's still clearing debris, even though they did the first wave, they're doing second wave. Guard City, Westland, part of Canton. So there's a lot of cities they're still picking up. So the resources to pick up debris is very limited. So we have to go some, probably outside the area to get companies to come in. Because like this morning, you know, Mr. Gavin and I, we're on call with several companies. They have to actually try to reach out to cities outside this area here to be able to get trucks. So that's one of the, I mean, good idea for Councilman Badun to put a motion. Because we have to, we have to have money allocated, obviously, to pick up the debris. So we can tell companies, because it's our first come, first served. So we call them up, we commit, say, hey, we need 10 trucks, 15 trucks. You know, then at least we'll have the money, then we can actually contract them. And as, you know, most people know, they're not going to commit to a city. We can say, let's go back to the council to approve, to get the money to clean up the debris.
I don't see any reason why we don't approve that amount of money, especially if we don't use it, it will stay in the general fund.
Well, let's just make the motion and vote on it.
Well, yeah, let's move on, because we are getting pretty late, and we're not at the end.
Move the motion to allow the administration.
I just wanted to say.
What, is there?
Now, that was part of my statement I was going to make. Is there a company out there that can do this? And in a timeframe where they say maybe we can get it done in a week, and GFL can get it done in a week? Are we getting like overlap, where GFL could have done it in two weeks? Do we have a company? I think I talked to Director Gavin today, and he said that you've been researching this. Is there a company that can do it immediately? Come in?
Counselor Chair.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so we have several companies right now that we're looking at. Again, you know, we need the funding. We can start as early as tomorrow morning to, I mean, we have somebody working right now.
All right, let's just vote on this and get going.
Madam Chair, I move the motion to allow the administration to cap at 300,000, to be able to pick up the debris in the city of Dearborn Heights.
And come back in two weeks.
And come back in two weeks. And if needed more, we can amend that.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. I think we've already discussed it, unless there's, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, we are still on comments from council members.
And I also want to apologize to the clerk, or if there's anything that's going to cause any distraction. But I want you guys to know, today I walked into city hall, and I was stopped at least 10 times. And I said, man, and I just kept walking with Director Lee, and I kept saying, please take his phone number, take his address, and help him.
Do we have to make a motion to go back to the rules?
At this time, no. We're on comments. And I do, I do have something. Okay, go ahead. Is anybody else?
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Yeah, so, one other thing about Warren Valley Golf Course, we discussed it here for a couple minutes. And we discussed, right when we bought it, I believe, at the time, at the time, Councilwoman Lisa Clayton wanted to do a deed restriction on it. So that's just another thing that I'll throw in. But we've never seen any reports of how much money the golf course is generating. I believe that Councilman Wenzel's asked for this in the past. And we should start getting a, at least a monthly review of what is being made, okay? And the other thing is, I don't know the legalities of this, but something that Corporation Council may look into with the Planning and Planning Commission, about new businesses using the same kind of surfaces that the Richard Young Center has. Water absorbing surfaces, because I'm going to tell you, I'm so afraid of the new stuff that's going in on Ford Road, we're going to get more flooding. And if they start building more things, I know we don't have any authority over them, but west of the airport, we may be in trouble too. But having something like what they use at Richard Young Center, the porous pavement, where the water can go through to the underlayment, would kind of help me out a little bit. And I did, had some complaints about yard waste not picked up in two weeks. I called my guy at GFL, Sam. He told me they should have all the yard waste picked up today. So everything should be on schedule. So just that kind of information and.
Yeah, I seen a lot of GFL trucks out today picking up yard waste in my neighborhood.
Mine was picked up yesterday.
That was the first ones that came by.
I didn't even put mine out, because I didn't know. Any other comments from the council table?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Thank you. I worked along with our Neighborhood Association President Nancy Brier, going to some houses in the north end that had bad flooding. And also with the Lebanese American Heritage Club in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights. And everybody was impressed with the job that the administration did, responding to the flooding and giving updates on social media as to the progress. And then I, also regarding the fireworks, 4th of July has passed, so I hope we're not going to be hearing fireworks going off, especially in the, where our homes are so close to each other. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, I have something here. Hold on a minute. Someone asked me to announce this. After rehearsing building sets and buying costumes, Crosswood Theater's production of Jekyll and Hyde that was supposed to be in spring of 2020 was shut down due to COVID. They finally got approval to do it in July of this year at the high school, when the auditorium, along with many classrooms flooded. But thankfully, Riverside stepped up and is allowing us to do our show there. They, the dates are July 29th, July 30th, and July 31st. It will be 7:00 PM for all those days. Tickets are $15 at crosswoodtheater.com, or you can purchase at the door. Thank you.
Counselor Chair.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, I'd like to give some update to the council, also our residents. As mentioned, I know Councilman Wenzel stole a little bit of thunder here. For the assessment forms, the flood assessment forms are available on our city website, also at the city hall. Everybody that was affected by this last flood needs to fill that form. And the reason why is we need accountability for the homes that were flooded. And that's how FEMA is actually going to advocate, you know, try to get a national disaster declared by the amount of homes that were flooded. So please fill out the form, assessment form. We do have it here. If you need help filling it out, we'll help you. We have, our staff are ready to do that. There's a 211 connect. They assign that, it's fully staffed right now. So for senior citizens, that they need help still in their basements, they can call 211. And they will put you on a list for people to come and help you with whatever you need to take the furniture, whatever, out of the basement to the curb. And also, if you want to volunteer, you can also call 211 and put your name on a volunteer list. We have a group, a church group, it's called the Samaritan Purse. They're also on the city Facebook. You can get their phone number. And again, you know, those, you can volunteer as well. And, but they'll come in, and also for senior citizens only and disabled. They'll help you fix your basement, or actually clear your basement, sanitize it, and get the stuff out of your basement. So again, the FEMA has not declared it as a national disaster yet. They're still waiting, they're gathering information, they're going to present that. Hopefully, our president will declare it as a national disaster. And once it's declared as a national disaster, there'll be town hall meetings to update the residents. It's going to be throughout, congressional delegates will also participate in the town hall meetings to let the residents know that this is, you know, just how to get the funding and everything else. So make sure you document everything that you lost. And they actually advise that if you do have insurance, you talk to your insurance first to see. Some residents are actually, they have rather insurance, and they're able to collect money, but they don't cover everything. So make sure you document everything. So when FEMA gets a hold of you, they'll have the information. They also created an infrastructure committee. That's about, the state actually just created that. And July 19th is the first meeting. And that's based on all the stuff that they've been doing, that's been going on since the flood. And so one of the things, I'd actually like to thank our emergency manager, Lee Gavin. He's been working around the clock. He's, sorry, you know, still call him a chief. He retired as a chief, but I've never seen him work so hard. He's been working, again, you know, long hours, you know, sometimes in the middle of the night, you know, people call him for things. And I know I've called him several times. I've been here on Saturdays and Sundays, and he's been here. And I'd like to commend him, you know, for everything you're doing, chief.
Yeah, Lee.
Also, Chief Brogan, he's been also with, when we did the FEMA walk, we, 12 hours, you know, he hung with us, Chief Brogan, and also emergency manager, Lee Gavin. We had our police officers with three FEMA folks, and also people from the state police. So we walked to, again, I want to reiterate this, a lot of residents said that nobody visited them. So what FEMA did, they looked at basically the 1,400 homes that we have documented. So they wanted to pick a sample of those homes. So it's not like, hey, you got to go to this area, go to this area. They're pretty much, you know, they wanted to look at the entire map of Dearborn Heights, and the areas that got hit by the flood. And they were mostly concerned, like, say, if they go to, again, I need to explain that to the council, so they know when somebody calls you. They walk up to like two, three homes, and they have, let's say, two, three inches of water. If they walk to the fourth or fifth home, the same thing, two, three inches of water, they move on to the next neighborhood. Because they're trying to take samples, you know, the least amount, and that's how they categorize the severity of the flood damage. And I also want to thank Mr. Deeb. He's been on the ground. I know a lot of residents called, you know, they had issues, as Councilman Badun mentioned. Some people had holes in their backyards, and they didn't know what these holes were. And that's why you guys saw the motion on the floor. So thank you very much for identifying that. And I want to commend also the police department. Right after the, we had the flood assessment, you know, after spending 12, 13 hours on the road, Lee Gavin calls me, and he says, hey, there was a shooting at Warren Valley. It was actually, somebody reported it wrong. But I showed up on the scene, it was a very ugly scene, there was no shooting. And I want to commend our police officers. They actually could have used deadly force, but they did not use deadly force. You know, they were able to take the person down without using, obviously, deadly force. And thank you, the police officers for doing that. That was amazing. And that person used his car as a weapon, tried to ramp two police vehicles, and they still, the police maintained their composure, and also their professionalism. Thank you. Also, I want to commend the fire department, you know, right after the, I mean, a couple days after the flood, they responded to a bad fire on gully. And I tell you, I've never been touched, it was very touching to see four, five firefighters, firefighters sitting on the ground, huddled. And some of them were probably, like, looked like they were in tears, because they were trying to save a German shepherd. And they could, after 20 minutes, they could not resuscitate that German shepherd. And, you know, passed away. And it was very emotional to see those firefighters, you know, cope with that. So thank you, the firefighters, as well. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for you. Not only, I'm sure all the residents have the same situation, because you know how high the level of the water went up on porches. Not only did my basement flood, but I had stuff in my garage, in my garage flooded. Actually, I had cabinets that I was going to put in my basement, and they got soaked with water. Is that covered by the FEMA, because it went into the garage?
So, Counselor Chair, with what we were told by FEMA, anything that was flood-related damage, to go ahead and fill out the survey form and turn it in. So even if, in the garage, actually, we visited some garages, that a lot of people had stuff in there. And there was a lot of senior citizens, actually. We went to a senior citizen, just not too far from me, I won't say the street name, that Lee Gavin dispatched us to. She was in tears because she had. She was in tears because she had, for years she collected veterans' things that she was actually going to do last year, a Christmas event for the veterans at the VA Hospital. And she lost everything. So we actually spent a few hours with the help of Hassan Ahmad over there. You know, he was there clearing the senior citizens' home, again, not too far from here. And so the FEMA said, okay, make sure you document it, just write that stuff down, you know, take pictures. And, you know, when FEMA comes, they're going to be contacting their residents when they declare it as a national emergency. And then, you know, I'm sure they can retrieve some of that because I don't know how much they have, they don't know yet. Everything's up in the air. But please, yeah, any damage from the flood, fill out the flood survey form.
Thank you. And once again, I'd like to thank the administration for everything they've done during this flooding. At this time, I will open it up to public announcements.
Everyone's waiting for Mike.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to remind residents that if you are hesitant to leave your house for a pickup, our delivery service is still up and running, which will be indefinitely. If you have a hold, you can call us at 313-791-3800 at Carolyn Kennedy Library or 313-791-6050 at John F. Kennedy Jr. Library, and we will bring it to you. You can also call us and we'll put an item on hold for you. Also wanted to thank Elegant Homes Realty and Jennifer Gross for donating 30 box fans for use with the flood cleanup. This is in addition to the fans that we had purchased, you know, through the library and the mayor's office for helping and facilitating that contact. If anyone still needs a fan, you know, we can drop them off. So we've been doing that for some time now. And I also wanted to wish a fond farewell. We have two staff that have departed. One is Michael Rona, who after 15 years retired from John F. Kennedy Jr. Library, is supervising librarian there. And the branch librarian at Carolyn Kennedy Library here, Emily Good, moved her position to right by her house. So she got a position right by her house so she could just walk to work, so.
Awesome.
We bid them both farewell and that's all for now. And thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank you guys for enabling us to continue to offer the same trips that we've been able to offer in the past. So thank you for that. I'd like to also let you know that we do have some projects that have started. We've got the gymnasium at the Richard A. Young Center. I think it needs just one more coat. And if you've seen it, it looks like a brand new floor. Actually, people have told me they thought we put a new floor in and all we did was sand it down to the wood and recover it. So we will be starting on the fitness room floor next, taking all the fitness equipment out and putting the rubber floor in. And then in front of the Canfield Center, you'll see a lot of the entryway cement removed and replaced. So we won't have any more people tripping on their way into the Canfield Center. So that will be really nice. Also, we have our senior picnic coming up on July 22nd at the Warren Valley Golf Course. We have it going from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, ages 55 and over. And we will be offering a bus for transportation from the Eaton Center, and that's $5 a ticket. Two free events that we've got coming up at the Warren Valley Golf Course, all the families are welcome. July 28th is the concert that we originally had scheduled for the 1st of July, and that's 50 Amp Views. It will be running from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. We're going to have food trucks there for people to purchase food. And we are going to also be having a lot of kids' activities, free activities for them. We're going to have Home Depot come in and do projects with the kids. We're going to have our staff with the Parks and Recreation Department do kids' activities with the kids. We've got a balloon artist, face painting, and then we've got all kinds of different things going on for that day. So it'll be a really, really nice event for the kids. August 6th is another band that we've got coming in for Warren Valley. It's called Toppermost. It's a Beatles tribute band. It's going to run from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, so it's a little bit later. Because at 9:40, we are going to have what's called a lighted drone show. If you've, if you got to see the presidential inauguration, they had a drone show on the television, if you obviously saw it that way. But they have a lot more drones. But we got a really good deal from the Firefly Drone Show out of Detroit, so they're local. And I was able to talk them down, but we have a sponsor for that event. Elite Sports is going to sponsor them. And they will be playing, or they will be doing their show approximately the last 15 to 18 minutes of the performance. So it's going to be a really, really exciting event. We're going to have food trucks there. We are going to have some kid games again so that the kids don't have to sit there the whole time. We definitely want people to bring their own chairs and also blankets if they want to sit on the blankets. And it's just going to be a couple of fun nights. So we'll have more, but I don't want to confuse everybody, so I'll save the others for later.
Who'd you say is sponsoring the drone show?
Elite Sports.
Elite Sports, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we thank them because we wouldn't be able to have it without them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Hi. Long time no see. We have a primary election coming up, August 3rd. I do want to let everyone know that the clerk's office will be open on July 31st from 8:00 to 4:00 for election business only. We do have our voting booths up here already if anybody wants to come in and get an absentee ballot during regular business hours. Also that we are still looking for election workers. You can give us a call at 791-3430 if you're available and interested, or you can go on our website and there's the applications there. And also we've been getting many calls about what's on the ballot. The mayoral positions on the ballot, but there's two different terms on there because of the way our charter is written. The appointed term will run till the certification of the November election through the end of this year. And then the four-year term will start January 1st for four years. Just want to let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public announcements?
Counselor Chair.
Go ahead, Chief.
Fire over here.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You're next.
I can't resist the softball that the mayor gave about Lee Gavin. That is the hardest I've ever seen him work in 23 years. No, I respect, this is my mentor, it's a man I respect and I know he loves the residents and this city so much, and I know he worked tirelessly. But it was a great softball to pick on him, so thank you. I'm here with Chief Brogan. There's three topics we want to touch on. One that had to do with fireworks, I'm going to touch on giving an update about the body worn camera program. We are seeking out the grant, we've applied for it, it'll be submitted here in the next few days. So we hope to get that. We are now in the testing and experimentation stage, so you're going to see a handful of our officers wearing body cameras right now. They're testing three different units. Right now we have one of them going, they'll do that for two or three weeks, another one for two or three weeks. That committee's worked very diligently, but we hope to get those implemented, get the grant, get them implemented, and get them out there deployed to protect our officers, to have the transparency that citizens are looking for and make our city move forward and in the right direction. So we're moving on good there. Secondly, the two biggest topics from the police department is aggressive driving and fireworks. I'm going to bring up the fire chief. We're going to talk about what the fire department experienced and what we've done for the enforcement and what we still need residents to do. So from the fireside, I'm going to let Chief Brogan talk.
Sure. For the fireworks, I think we all saw just an incredible amount of fireworks again for the stretch of days there around the Fourth of July. And we're very fortunate that we had no serious injuries. We did have, on the Fourth itself, we had eight fires from, they're all small fires, but eight of them from around 9:30 at night till around 2:00 in the morning. There were dumpster fires, grass fires, a chair. One of them was a garbage fire that did get into a car.
Fireworks, related?
They were all fireworks related. So just, I'm glad we made it through without any major losses again. We had some very close calls in the last few years. I think everyone heard about what happened in Novi with the NHL player that was killed. We've had, last year I know we had some fireworks that went off at a wrong angle and shot towards people and blew out screen doors and damaged cars. And this is just, it's really, it's a horrible tradition. I just wish it would go away. The only way to do fireworks is with professional shows. And we've really been very fortunate that we haven't had anything more serious happen than this. So anyways, that's the summary of fireworks for the year.
From the police side and the enforcement end, we've been tracking our calls since May 29th, which is basically the Memorial Day weekend when they were legal for the one day, then now the Fourth of July. So over that course of time, we received approximately 70 complaints of, as calls for service from the police department. The problem with complaints when it comes to fireworks is we need witnesses in participation. Of those 70 calls, only 15 people volunteered to participate to be a witness or a complainant. Of those 15 people that wanted to do it, we were able to enforce eight violations for fireworks. Four times we were called out, they were deemed to be legal. They were, just happened to be fireworks that were permissible. But when we have complainants and we have witnesses, we can enforce it. Sadly, about 50 plus of those complaints wanted to remain anonymous or refused to provide their information. They just wanted it to stop. If we want to have fireworks in control and enforcement, we need participation from the citizens. When we have participation, we can have enforcement. We cannot do it without you. We're not everywhere, we can't see them, we can't point out the persons. There is a legal process that has to be followed. So moving forward, I encourage all of our residents, if you want something to be done, we need witness participation, we need to be able to identify the perpetrators and have follow-through in prosecution within the city. So I encourage everybody to do that. The second main topic is aggressive driving. Working with the administration, the mayor's authorized us to put together an aggressive driving task force. We're actually working regionally with all the cities, including the city of Detroit, to combat aggressive driving. So for the weekends of the 28th, the 25th and 26th, which happened to be the flood weekend, the 18th and 19th weekend before, and then the weekend after the Fourth of July, so in five days, because on the flood weekend, we switched from aggressive driving to rescuing stranded drivers. So that switched very quickly during the flood. But during those five days of aggressive driving enforcement, we've had approximately 87 enforcements, which included 39 speeding, five careless, five drag racing, two squealing tires, 10 excessive noises for their mufflers, failure yield, eight red light violations, six suspension arrests, six vehicles have been impounded, and five have been seized for forfeiture for the drag racing. It's a number that I don't use, I've probably been using proud of the wrong way. We would rather have these all to be zero, but if we have to try to control aggressive driving, we will be out there on Friday and Saturday nights. We will be targeting those areas where people are taking over the road, causing dangerous situations, and we will take your vehicles when you're drag racing and we will forfeit them. Please cooperate, please let's follow the laws. We're here to make our city safe. And that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we have Nancy Brier.
Hi there. Before I get into my announcement for the Neighborhood Association, I'd like to personally thank Rachel and Kim. I had a minor emergency, my sugar was dropping. I went to use our candy machine, it kept my dollar and my candy bar stood there. So if anybody gets a Carmel bar out there, I already paid for it. And I did leave you a note then, because I guess other people are having problems with the machine. But Kim was brave enough to go and pick me out of Snickers and it worked. So thank both you ladies. I knew she had kids, so she went to the car and got me a sucker. So I was carrying all this no sugar stuff and I needed sugar. So but the other announcement is the Neighborhood Association will be on the 22nd at 3335 South Beach Daily. We have two speakers planned. This is the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association, but everyone is welcome. And our first speaker will be from the fire department. They're always real good about getting these speakers. We have Max, who is our fire marshal. He hopes to bring the equipment to show you how to put out a fire. I've seen this done and the key is to do it from the bottom and then work your way up. And I know the seniors have seen that and enjoy it. So that'll be fun. And he'll also fill us up on your latest adventures. And our second speaker will be our treasurer. She's going to come and remind us that our taxes are due. She's going to tell us how, where, and why we pay them. Anything else, Lisa? Okay. Thank you very much.
What time is it?
For real? Oh, 7 to 9. My meeting, I got you totally. Okay, I guess the sugar's not all worth it, should be. 7 to 9:00 PM.
Good.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
One more here.
Go ahead, please.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to, first of all, make an announcement to all of our team with cable. So that's Bob Ankrab, Angela, and John Sidikian for social media for helping us with the additional help this entire flood season, communicating back to the public. So thank you for that. I do want to make an announcement about all of those that filled out a volunteer form at the city website. So right now we are directing all the volunteers to go to the Samaritan's Purse for training. So if you do want to volunteer, you should have gotten an email from the city as well as a phone call. But you can also call 313-949-9077. And I also wanted to give an update on the FEMA flood mitigation grant application. So everyone is aware that we are applying for a new grant that is for an additional 20 homes with five alternates. And I think the flood did help encourage some people to fill out the volunteering form for this new FEMA grants. We're still taking a few of them. So if anyone is interested, please email me at mherandez@ci.dearbornheights- I mean, sorry, ci.mo. Yes, am I. Oh, my goodness. I am so sorry. And now I do have to ask for all of the council's assistance. We are in a new year and I reached out to corporate counsel and I realized that a lot of our commissions haven't received any Open Meetings Act training or parliamentary procedure training. I've also reached out to Ms. Senia. So we are trying to coordinate a training session for our commission members. There have been a lot of new ones in the past four years. So if you are in a commission and you do notice that there's something that is not being done right, please point it out, reach out to us in case they need any additional training with that. And by the next council meeting, we should have a date of when this training is taking place. We're reaching out to MMRMA and MML as well. So thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Hassan Ahmad, 27015 CCL. Since the mayor mentioned about the flood cleanup effort, I just want to mention it was a joint effort between LAHC, it's a local nonprofit, and the Dearborn Area Board of Filters. So I would like to, of course, with the mayor's office, I would like to thank all the realtors and all of the volunteers that did help with the flood cleanup. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public announcements?
Yeah. Yeah. Just want to introduce myself again. Bob Conrad, I'm DPW director now, and I'd like to thank the mayor for the opportunity to join his team. A little bit about me, I have previously, I'm retired from Wayne County Department of Public Services where I worked in the road maintenance section and engineering, construction. And I'm really excited to work with this great team we have here in serving you and the people of Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There he is. Real quick. Still working. Since the council approved us getting some vendors in and meet some contacts here, so starting tomorrow morning, we'll have some vendors. The area we're still concerned with is east of Telegraph. So starting tomorrow, they'll be working River Oaks, north of Garland Sub. So that's the area. I just wanted to give you a quick update. So hopefully in the next few days, we'll catch up on that. And then GFL, they're going to make one final round. We have some residents that put out the flooding debris after GFL made their original tour through the city. So we'll set that up hopefully this weekend. So hopefully, I know we've been promising, but hopefully by the end of this week, we'll get all the trash picked up.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, at this time, we- Okay. At this time, we will open it up to public comment. The limit is three minutes. You need your name, street, and city. Anybody? Go ahead, please. Oh, this is where you're supposed to be commenting.
Huh?
You're commenting on the commission?
No. Latiana was going to do it, but she got hungry.
You want to do it for her?
Not really.
Okay.
Can we do it next time?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I have a hoodie as well. And I have a hoodie as well. I will say, though, for the commission, that our next event is, for the month of July, we're recognizing American Disabilities Act, and our event is on the 25th, which is a Sunday. I forgot what time, but the mayor has all the information. He normally puts our events in his videos that he sends out and all his announcements, and of course, it's on the website, and so is our minutes.
Here, use your stove.
Yeah, that was going to be my comment for the announcement part, and so this is my actual public comments, whoever taking the time. I didn't want to come up here twice, it's freezing in here. My name's Leslie Willis. My address is 23469 Annapolis Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. I wanted to make a couple of comments. I am so excited about live streaming the meetings, and you guys, coming into the 21st century, made me smile over there in my chair. One thing I would have said is, I would have preferred for the credit card thing to be addressed differently, and I agree with where Councilman Baydun was going with this at first. I feel like all of the directors should have been approved at the same time, since you declined them at the last meeting, and they all didn't have an opportunity to tell you why they individually need it. I think we can assume why they need it, because literally nowhere takes checks. And you guys do have the opportunity to review the statements every month. They can be emailed to you, because you can go paper-free and get with the times. So I would have liked to see everybody get approved, and I hope you guys do do that at the next meeting, because I think all the directors should be given a credit card and be trusted with the whole $1,400 limit that you guys are going to give to them. The next thing I wanted to address was the same issues that, oh, it's so cold in here. The same issues that Director Constant had is the same issues that the commission is having, as it relates to us having to take thousands of dollars out of our pockets to go and put on events. So the one that's coming up next week is a $1,500 event that residents have to pay for, and then the process is like a month to get a check for reimbursement. So as you, you know, move into the 21st century with credit card allowances, just possibly looking at a different account and a different reimbursement process for commissions as well. And then last, I wanted to comment on the Act 78 study session. Can I do that? Or?
Yeah.
Okay. So I wasn't able to attend that one, but I did get to watch the video. I thought it was very informative, and I would like to see, you know, more study sessions like that. Do you want to take that?
Counselor?
No, I can't turn it off.
All right. What I will say is, I was a little disheartened and appalled by the way it ended. I feel like the council should be able to ask questions and should be able to get feedback on anything you guys want to learn more about. I kind of felt like it was a bullying tactic. I don't know if it was meant to be that way, but that's the way that it came off. You should be able to ask questions. I will agree with something that they said, though, which is, as it relates to diversity,